Yes, good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Planning Board for April 15th, 2021. I'm going to read the opening statement. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2021 resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2021 through January 2022. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 22nd, 2021. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 25th, 2021 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted on the municipal website, Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8, 2020, and again on January 6, 2021. Please note, as with regular in-person meetings, members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise their hand using the button at the center of the button, bottom of the participant's screen, or participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the Board will be immediately muted. The raise hand feature is not the same as the thumbs up icon or the applause icon. If you're having difficulty accessing this feature, use the Q&amp;A dialogue box to let tech support know, and they will try to assist you. Okay, I want to be doing the roll call.
Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Ms. Quinn, Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks? Mr. Tex Arney?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Present.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Gunny?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, under announcements, does anyone have anything they wish to add at this point?
Maybe we can make an announcement that next Thursday, we have a special meeting about the redevelopment.
Okay, I will, and has that on, is her calendar?
Yes, and that's for that area that a working title we call the North Harrison Study Area, and it centers on the Princeton Shopping Center.
Thank you. Any other announcements? All right, you were sent a draft copy of minutes from June 18th, 2020. That was the regular meeting, and I believe every member of the Board received that. Is that correct? This was for review, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Were there any comments?
I had some, I'm sorry, go ahead, Carrie.
I was just going to say she had, Mrs. Wilson had sent me some edits, very minor in detail, and those edits had been made. I can identify them if you need me to.
If it's short, why don't we identify them? Because it's hard for people to see how things creep into the minutes.
Okay. I duplicated her name in the present section, so that was corrected. On page two, I referenced John Bonnet, who was a member of the public who spoke. I thought he was a resident, he is not, so I removed that reference.
Okay.
Also, instead of saying the meeting was close to the public, I'm now going to use the phrase, "The public comment portion of the meeting was concluded," and those are the only edits.
Okay, anybody else have anything they want to add on that?
Yeah, excuse me, I have a couple. Under ordinance referral, accessory dwellings ordinance. First, I don't think Michael was actually sworn in, usually wouldn't get sworn in for something like that where it's a referral. Michael, do you have a recollection one way or another? I know it was a long time.
I was sworn in.
For the referral?
I believe so.
Okay, fine. On the second line of that, it says, Michael, replace blah, 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 and stated that the ordinance referral is for an amendment to the code to permit accessory uses. I would change uses to dwelling units.
I'm sorry, you would change it to what?
Dwelling unit, dwelling units.
Okay. Very good.
Then, under, just really a couple of minor grammatical things. It's at the top of my page three, which starts, Mr. Oakman thanked everyone?
Yes.
Okay, thanked everyone who has worked on this ordinance, creating different housing types and housing opportunities for different demographics, makes a huge difference. Changed the thought to that.
Yes.
And then, under C, third paragraph, Mr. McGowan advised that UHAC units, takeout units. Then the paragraph after that, the second sentence, Mr. McGowan recommended elimination of the term administration, but I think that B should be a that.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I just want to interject, this is Louise, to note that Ms. Sacks is in the meeting, so the minute should reflect.
Thank you.
He's here?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, anything else before we move on?
We have a motion to accept the minutes.
Yes. Who made that?
This is Louise, I'll move it.
I'll second.
Who was that?
Him.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, anyone?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, if you look at your agenda, you'll see that the rest of the meeting really is one application for Simplify Living. It's a minor site plan with variances. It's 2325 Humbert Street, block 4401, lot 12. And this is file number P1919-746PM. That's enough to identify it, so.
If I may, the notice is proper. Carrie, can you confirm the proof of publication service or an order?
Yes, that's confirmed.
The Board therefore has jurisdiction.
All right, I believe, I should ask Michael to go over this for us, or at least introduce.
You can raise your right hand.
Yep.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Good evening, everyone, thank you Chair. The application before you this evening is on the east side of Humbert Street, just north of Wiggins, and south of the Princeton Cemetery, is an interesting and old neighborhood in Princeton, very densely developed with multifamily homes as well as single family. There's a mixture. There was, there was until very recently, a two-family home on this site. It has since been demolished, and the applicant is proposing to replace it with a three-unit residential building. The three-unit residential building will be arranged on the site perpendicular to Humbert Street, so that will result in the need for some bulk variances based on the placement of the building and application of the code in terms of setbacks. It's a little more complicated, you'll be hearing about that from both the applicant and staff. The property is located in the R4 residential zone, so it is a permitted use, the three-unit, a three-family home, but then again, there are some bulk variances associated with the site plan application. The building and the site is not in a historic district, but it is nearby to the historic cemetery and other interesting and older areas of Princeton. So that's an overview.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a quick question, if I may, this is Louise.
Sure, go ahead.
Since this application is requesting several variances, and I don't have ready access to my copy of the municipal land use law, because I'm not, I'm not at home. Can someone remind, Mr. Muller, can you explain the burden of proof, if you will, you know, what needs to be demonstrated by the applicant to justify the variances?
Yes, there are positive and negative criteria. The positive criteria is because of, the one, the traditional one, is because of exceptional circumstances with respect to the property, such as size and shape, that conformance with the bulk standards is not practicable. The set of positive criteria that we almost always use is not that, but it's called the flexible C standard, which requires, and the applicant has a burden of demonstrating all of this. And flexible C standard requires that one or more purposes of the municipal land use law are advanced, that the benefits of granting the variance outweigh the detriments. And then the negative criteria, which would apply whichever set of positive criteria are used, is that there's no substantial detriment to the public good or substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zone scheme.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, if I may, John Pigeon had sent a letter in today, he's an attorney, and he indicated he was representing some objectives. If he's an attendee, I think he should be moved over to panelist, not to participate, although if he, he would have the right to raise objections. Carrie, has he seen an attendee?
I do not see him.
Okay.
He just popped up on the screen. Yeah, in the meantime, I wanted to mention that there is a private drive known as Humbert Lane, and it is the way that both this site and adjoining properties have access to Humbert Street. So you'll be hearing about that as well, because of course, that's impacted by the new development.
Okay, and Mr. Pigeon, if you could put your video on? Thank you. Now, you're muted.
Is that right?
I got it, I should know after attending thousands of hours of Zoom meetings to unmute.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess, Madam Chair, we're at the point where we turn it over to the applicant's attorney, and he takes it from there?
Who I hope is here.
Madam Chairwoman, Ryan Kennedy, I am here, so if you're ready for us, we'd be happy to start.
Yes, we are.
All right, good evening, members of the Board, Madam Chairwoman, members of the public, my name is Ryan Kennedy, I'm an attorney at Stevens &amp; Lee of Princeton Pike in Lawrenceville, here for the applicant tonight, Simplified Living. As Mr. LePlace indicated, this is a, an application for a permitted use in the R4 zone on Humbert Street, and the creation of a three-unit building along a little, what we'll call access easement or access driveway, called Humbert Place. There are several variances required for this, though many of them have to do with the proximity of the parking and the existing driveway that serves the neighborhood and the surrounding properties, to the surrounding properties. It's an existing condition of sorts, and similarly, there is a coverage variance that is needed for this project, but as you'll see, a good amount of that coverage is a function of this road that is needed to support the parking for the neighboring properties. The applicant is here tonight, as is our engineer and planner and architect, and we're excited to take you through the project. We, we were before Sprab more than a year ago, back in the before times, when people were met in person. We actually noticed for a meeting back before the world ended in March, was one of the first ones that got cut, and we're, made some revisions of the plans since then to try to implement more of the ideas that Sprab had, and we're excited to show it to you tonight. The applicant has a really, I think, unique, maybe not unique for Princeton, we have a lot of environmentally conscious people here, but unique as a developer commitment to a green design for this building. So I'm excited to introduce him and have him explain a little bit about the project and what they're looking to do, and the environmental certifications that they're pursuing for the construction here. Then we'll hear from the architect, and then our engineer and planner. Just as a matter of housekeeping, I've got one PowerPoint slide deck that we provided to the municipality planning office in advance, that I'd like to share and have marked as our one exhibit this evening, and Mr. Muller, if you'd like, I could have my three witnesses sworn in at the same time, if that's easier for you.
Yeah, and let's mark what you, just your exhibit as a one, obviously be vertical marking, virtual marking. Yeah, why don't we swear in all witnesses at the same time?
Akash, Jim, and Dan, if you could unmute yourselves.
All the way down.
Oh, okay.
But if you could each raise your, if you could each raise your right hand? If everybody could raise their right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed? If you could go around and state your full name and spell your last name.
Akash Ghulyani, G-H-U-L-Y-A-N-I.
James Kamelak, C-H-M-I-E-L-A-K.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to hopefully successfully share my screen here. We'll start with our marked A1 exhibit, maybe a show of thumbs up if that was successful, if we could see that? All right, thank you. Akash, if you could unmute yourself, we'll start with you. If you could introduce yourself and your relationship to the project here?
Sure. Good evening, Board members, thank you for having us over here. My name is Akash Ghulyani, I represent Simplified Living, and of course, the purpose of my being here is to present this application. I'm going to talk a little bit about what was existing over at the site before we, you know, started this project and started the demolition of the structure that was there. The structure that was there was built in 1920, the site has no stormwater management system. It was, it had asbestos material in there. There's a combination of brick, stone, stucco foundation, and the most of the building material that we went in was, was toxic, including the walls, the flooring. It appeared to be all original from 1920, so the electrical was outdated, plumbing was outdated, there was no air conditioning. The only option we saw for this house was to rebuild from scratch, and in fact, the house was in such a poor condition, we, along with the owners, made a decision to keep the property vacant and without tenants. So for the past year, there has been no occupancy in the property, because the house was in such a poor condition. What we are proposing there is, of course, as everyone, those, we are proposing three connected townhomes with a massive engineering plan, huge, huge stormwater tanks over there, and our construction practices are, in our opinion, set the standard for green building, not only in Princeton, but across the street. Brian, would you mind moving it to?
Sure. So here, Akash, if we just, just to orient the board here, I think we've got an aerial map and the zoning map here, perhaps just to point out to the board that the site is in the neighborhood, as well as the cemetery above it, as Mr. LePlace had indicated. Anything else about the neighborhood, perhaps it's, you know, walking proximity to downtown that you want to mention here, Akash, before we move on?
Let me just, let me just interrupt for a second. Are these, are these numbered, these slides?
They are, this one got covered up, this is slide two. The number will appear shortly, I think, starting with four, they're no longer covered anymore.
Great, and if you could refer to the?
Absolutely.
Page number as you go through, thank you.
Absolutely, so this is, for the record, this is page two, with the tax map and the aerial map.
So, yes, so it is 2325 Humbert Street, it is certainly in walking distance to Princeton Downtown, and these three connected townhomes would serve people who want to work and, you know, walk to downtown. It serves, it's a very good location for that purposes. So getting back to the green, there is a lot of information we put here.
And for the record, this is slide three, I think I covered it with the EV charger, apologies, but under there, there is a three.
We, in terms of the green construction, there's a lot of information we put there, and I'm certainly willing to talk about certain points. I think we start with LEED, it's version four, we're seeking for, so anywhere between 50 to 60 points, we're between silver and gold. So there's four certifications in terms of what we're seeking in green design building. We, this is not our first project, doing a green building project, we have done a project where we have successfully obtained these three certifications, the indoor air plus DUI energy and energy star. So LEED would be something we are adding to this, this project over here, and as you can see, you know, our, our construction company, in fact, has a green word in it, so. And our architect will also talk more about, you know, what more products we're sort of using, I guess in terms of just going in from, anything from paints to insulation, flooring, walls, doors, molding, kitchen cabinets, countertops, they have to be all have certain certifications in order for us to do that kind of a construction. Obviously, we are rebuilding the sidewalks, we are rebuilding the access easement driveway, we're building the water tanks over there, we're building, there was a recommendation from SPAR to put one electronic charger, we're putting three electronic chargers on our site, and we're also putting a lot of in previous, previous favors, which will also add to us managing the water on the site. And with this said, I'm going to pass this on to Dan from here.
All right, Akash, thank you, just one last question for me, you know, while you're, you've got some of the components you've decided upon in advance, your commitment really is to get these certifications, and there's a lot of different choices that you could make going forward with your building techniques, but the commitment is to get these and to determine as you're, as you're finalizing the design, which of the, of the, you know, LEED components, for example, you would pursue in getting that certification, is that correct?
Yes, so for LEED, you know, I went through the list with our consulting firm that actually does the certification for us, so if you see those six points on there, that is absolutely, you know, we have that selection that is going to be part of this. Of course, we have to have a little bit more comprehensive look at the entire project and sort of pick up points, what we can and what we can do. You know, there is a onsite bike parking, so I think that sort of falls into one of the category for LEED certification, where you have bike parking, that you get certain points for that. So these little points, once we have the whole project, we are going to comprehensively look at it, and the minimum, we obviously, we do know that we are going to do LEED silver, we're shooting for LEED gold, and if we can get to LEED platinum, we, we'd certainly like to go as far as we can.
Right, thank you, Akash.
Thank you.
I'm going to move, and I promise this will be the last slide where the number is covered, this is four, and I'm going to introduce Dan Fortunato, our architect, already sworn in, but Dan, if you could, I know you've testified before this board in Princeton before, but if you could take them quickly through your, your experience and credentials, so I could have you entered as an expert this evening.
Absolutely, I'm a practicing New Jersey, what is it, New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, testified before on this board. We are basically, we were presented about this by the project, and we tried to do this on this.
Is Fortunato? I'm sorry, there's like background noise or something, the audio is a little strange, can you try again?
Very difficult to understand, that's correct.
Okay, you probably have another, another speaker on, maybe through your phone or something? Yeah, there's like two speakers. Sorry.
That's a little better.
I lowered the volume, I'm not trying to help at all, but is this any better or no?
If you, if you just speak loud, the volume and pace issue, so the, just speak a little slower and louder, perhaps that might?
Let me, I'll continue here, I don't have any credentials, my analysis is not good, practicing in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and I have testified before, basically on this project, the exciting part of this project is that making a first story in front of the panel, structure is going to be.
Madam Chair.
Sorry, it's not working.
Interruption, I'm still not able to understand Mr. Fortunato.
No, I'm having difficulty too.
Perhaps if he left and returned?
No, I think it's his speakers going off and on, fading in and out.
It seems to have gotten worse, actually.
Let me, let me report this, I'm on a different computer, if I can log out, but you will be able to see me on the other computer, is that okay? You'll probably be able to hear me better.
Would it be possible to have him dial in to the, to the phone number and mute his computer, so we could watch him, but just listen to him through the telephone?
That sounds like a good idea.
That's, yeah, workable, we've done that before.
Dan, give me.
All right, um, my God, sorry, continue without me. All right?
Hold on, I'm pulling up the agenda here to get the call-in number.
I'm beginning to miss the loud ventilation of the old meeting room.
Yes, well, it will come back.
Obviously, if someone has the, has the call-in number handy, I'd appreciate it, I'm pulling up the agenda.
Okay, what's the call, the call-in number?
There's a one-tap mobile number on the legal notice, or the agenda as well.
That's what I'm trying to get to, Mr. Fortunato.
The number that I see is, well, the one-tap number is 646-558-8656.
And there's a PIN code following that?
That's true, if you want to go that route, but that's a valid number also.
Yeah, I'm sorry, let me give you a different one than the one associated, well, I guess the closest, oh, here we are, New York.
This is New York.
646-558-8656, same number.
I still need the webinar ID.
There's a webinar.
You still need, you still need to give them the ID and the password.
Okay, okay, eight, the webinar ID number is 892-7175-8968.
And then the passcode is, well, actually, sorry, I was about to give out my, accidentally give out my participant ID instead of the passcode.
I think you just said number, don't you?
I do not see a. I do not see a passcode associated with this. Just a webinar ID.
Dan, you have that?
That's not the same as the webinar ID. No? Usually it just had the number sign, the hashtag to get into the meeting.
Yeah, there's several ways to get in. There's many phone numbers that are provided for direct links. Or you can do one tap mobile, which is a little bit more involved. So.
Same numbers though.
Yeah, it's, it's been Dana, I texted it to you as well.
And Justin put it in the chat.
Thank you, Justin.
You're welcome. That's what I'm here for.
He's our quality control.
Carrie, there'll be a 908 number popping up as a participant. I don't see it yet, but that's, that's what he'll be calling in from.
Okay.
While we're waiting, I have a quick question. Are these units for sale or are they rental housing?
Akash, if you want to answer that, I, I don't know that they've actually made a commitment yet. I think two would be, to start off as rental, is that correct Akash?
99% they're will, they will be rentals. So we will be managing them.
Okay.
I also noticed that a lot of the original stone foundation is still in place from the first building. Is any of that being incorporated into the, the new structure or?
That is not being, that we're holding the, I guess it's a, it's not, the short answer is it's not being incorporated. So it would be a poured foundation, which would be absolutely new. And the reason we're rating is because there is a access driveway. Once we start to take that off, we will have to put some fence to restrict, put some restrictions and I, we, I guess the reason we're not doing is to be able to have our neighbors that are on the north to be able to park as long as they can.
Was any of that, was it considered for to keep some of that stone on site and in different use, maybe incorporated into landscaping or walks? It'd be nice for it not to disappear from Princeton. That's all the reason I'm asking.
We could certainly, I mean, that's, that's a wonderful idea to sort of incorporate that in some of the landscaping. And we could certainly see there, there is a, there's, there's stone, it's a combination of stones, stucco. So we can certainly, you know, 90% of that, over 90% of the home has been hand, it's been demoed using, you know, hand demo. So we haven't used the equipment because the site is just so tight. And in order to not inconvenience and we have, we do so such a green sort of a demolition that everything over there has been recycled. We have records for everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, can you?
Rex, we can.
We, we can, Dan. Carrie, I also see Dan on as an attendee virtually as well. I don't know if we want to try to bring both on or if that's a recipe for disaster.
All right, shall I go?
Let me bring my screen back. We left off at, at slide four. Actually, what we left off was Dan.
I'm sorry, Ryan, Ryan. I just want to point that Dan Brown was brought in, not Dan Fortunato.
This is Dan Fortunato.
This is John Pigeon.
Dan Brown, I'm sorry. Who did you want me to bring over?
Dan Fortunato, I think is in the way to, as an attendee on his computer still as well.
I see him as, I see him as a panelist now, but he needs to turn on his camera.
Oh, God.
You need to, yeah, turn on your camera and mute your speakers.
Yes.
Well.
Well, I shut off the computer.
Jerry, since he was on camera before, could he continue on the phone for now or does he have to get back on camera?
I think we should go ahead with Josephine.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we've documented that it's him.
Thank you.
Sorry, Bob. Thank you.
Much appreciated. So Dan, we, we kind of lost you audio wise when you were introducing yourself frankly. So I think we should just start again with briefly your credentials and license. So I can have you entered as an expert.
Okay, okay. I'm Dan Fortunato, practicing architect in Skilman, New Jersey. I'm licensed in New Jersey, New York and Pennsylvania. I have been in front of this board for this project and others. So I would like to just start by saying with this project that we were working on, the three
Dan, just one second. With that, Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to have him accepted as a, as an expert, as an architect.
We, we accept his credentials.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So Dan, sorry for interrupting you there. And just so you
No problem.
know, if you can't see that, do you have those slides up as well on your computer? Are you able to see what we're looking?
Yeah, I, I
Okay.
I can see who you just So, okay, yeah. So looking at the perspectives that we have drawn here, essentially with the three family units that we have designed, the two story with the basement. We tried to, as Akash alluded to before, try to work around the best, the best type of design we could use for lead and working in those credentials. And we are going into working with probably on the framing of this building, metal stud framing, metal stud floor construction. And we're also going to delve very closely into how to use the best energy efficient products. Everything from the proper plumbing fixtures on WaterSense plumbing fixtures, Energy Star appliances. The windows on the job are very important. We are going to use the, right now proposed to using Anderson windows, double glazed with a very high U value, very low view, we'll strike that. And then of course, as far as thermal insulation, we also are going to buy by the state requirements, which will give us the, all the required minimum standards on bad insulation will be used on the project. As far as any of the other lead type of things we can use on the job, we're looking for very low VOC requirements, i.e. paint, interior finishes. And also materials are another credit we can have tried to buy for lead, basically looking for materials within 500 miles. That's also another lead credit we can apply for tankless water heaters and lighting controls, dimmer switches. So these are all basic things we are going to shoot for on the design. As far as the exterior of the building, we did use a mix of colors, as you could see, well, basically it's black and white. But, but to try to break up the three units. And then we also work with using a different mix of materials and, and styles, clavering siding, board and batten. And then we have some metal roof structures as well, just to change it up and dress it up and make it look a little bit nicer for the, for the community. I opted to go with a hip style roof only because of keeping a low profile of the structure itself. So in essence, it's pretty much the, the obvious things that we're going to be doing to the project.
Dan, the, the suggestion about the materials, that's something that came from our, our, our meeting with SPAR, is that correct?
Oh, yeah, we, we sort of collaborated quite a few times on different types of looks as well as last meeting we had when you said prior to COVID. Last time we met, there was a suggestion made about maybe creating a different aesthetic for the building by changing it up instead of having one monolithic color. So we opted to make the, the middle unit a different color to help break up the three units. And then also a little bit mixing up of the materials, i.e. the metal roofing that we used on the job.
So next here, we're on slide five and I, I think from here on out, you will be able to see the, the numbers on here.
So this slide here, the two dimensional elevations anyway, again, show the different mix of materials that we opted for. The shingles aren't really shown, but we'll be using asphalt shingles on the roof as well as a little bit of combination with the metal roofing. And then we have horizontal siding, different size siding. So it's not, it's a little hard to see here in the, in the rent and the elevation. But we'll be using different siding styles and sizes as well in the vertical board batten on the end units. On the floor plans, again, we tried to create a very open floor plan here. We're still playing around with ideas of long span joists. So the dotted dash line, you see, will right across the middle. That is a beam, but we're going to probably avoid that beam by using longer span joists. And that's we're investigating right now. So the bottom line is to create a very open floor plan, at least on the first floor anyway, and create a very nice usable space. The second floor, second floor, yeah. So we have essentially working with three bedrooms per unit and master bedroom, two smaller bedrooms, and then two bathrooms on the second floor. We also tried to accommodate, which I didn't touch on, the washer dryers, which will be on the first floor. But essentially working with the, basically all the needs of, of the client. Ryan, we don't have the basement, I don't think on this, these slides, do we? Probably not.
No.
That's the attic space. All right, the attic space, we could, you could stay on that. The attic space we could formed with, working with Derek Bridger on this, as far as maintaining the allowable square footage of attic space you can have. It is a walk up attic, but it does comply with the requirements of the code not to exceed any extra square footage.
So this, this is a, an attic that would be good for storage for, for units like this.
Exactly. It's not designed for habitable use or, but it's really designed exactly right, just for storage. Instead of having a pull down ladder, like most people probably have or scuttle, we opted to just go with the walk upstairs.
Now, I, just to go back one here, but we, I guess we didn't include the basement spot side, but there, there is a useful basement here for, for the residents as well.
That's correct. There's a full, there's a full basement design for this project as well. And again, it's, it's just an open space, nothing really exciting down there, just a basement.
Thank you, Dan. Next, I'd like to start getting into the, the site plans. I'll introduce our civil engineer and planner, Jim Kamalik. Jim, if you could unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Kamalik from Ken Show Resources. I'm the licensed engineer and professional planner in New Jersey. I've been qualified before this board on many other projects and have a degree in the field of civil and environmental engineering from Rutgers University. And participated in the, the preparation of this version of the plan that you see here on this slide.
Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, I know you've recognized him many times before. I'd ask perhaps if you could again, if that's the board's pleasure.
Now, we recognize his qualifications.
Thank you. So Jim, I'm looking here at slide nine. This is the, the colored version of the site plan. You want to take the board through how this, how this site is, is laid out?
Sure. Largely in, in terms of the layout, the overall layout will remain similar to the existing condition where we have exiting off Humbert Street to the driveway access, which has been referred to as Humbert Lane. It's, it's part of this, the applicant's lot and the applicant's property. There are access easements and, and easement for provision of some parking for the neighboring property to the north, which is on the top of the page. But this accessway along the north side of the property, the applicant felt landed itself well to an attached dwelling arrangement, the existing duplex structure, which is very small from a footprint standpoint, about 600 square feet for each unit, the, the pre-existing duplex unit at the front. But the front of the building would be located pretty much within that footprint, however, at a narrower width than the existing structure. And then it would continue towards the rear, following the available building area towards the rear of the property with the access driveway maintained on the left side as you're, you're entering the property from, from Humbert Street. Additionally, you can see that in the brown color, we have the various entries to the building, one at the front from Humbert Street, one at the rear of the dwelling, and then the middle unit would be accessed from the access driveway. Moreover, an improvement that you can see on this site plan here is that three stalls, parking stalls or spots would be allocated for the new building to satisfy the parking requirement. And that would be independent of taking up area which is within this access driveway area, which the neighbors come in and out of and some park in that location. So the extension of those three parking stalls here is an added benefit because it takes the parking demand away from that common access and puts it at the rear of the property where it can be segregated and separated. And then the applicant would seek to provide some additional parking. I believe it's two additional stalls, which currently isn't permitted now as part of this application for the, the duplex oriented building immediately adjacent to the north property line, pretty much in the center of the project. The building on the right in pink has an existing allowance for a parking stall and access. But the applicant would, as part of this, provide an additional parking stall for each of those two units there in the center for a total of two additional parking stalls. So we see this as a benefit. You know, assisting and aiding and providing some additional parking space and separating the, the parking area so that they can better be utilized. At the rear of the property, we have just behind the rear unit between the parking and the, the last unit of the building, there is a trash enclosure and recycling enclosure area as well as a bike rack there. And then there's a, an open space area at the rear of the lot. One of the other challenges with this particular property is because of these site constraints, the, the overall width of the property and the need for continuing to provide that access down the common driveway, which is located on this property, is it, it tends to minimize the, the overall open space here on the property. So here at the rear of the building, there are provisions for 1,200 square feet of usable open space. Relief is being sought for that because it's under the 1,800 minimum requirement. However, just, you know, for some context, it would provide for the ordinance fulfillment of that surface area for two units. So at any one time, two of those units would be, provide the minimum area to use that back area. And then there's a common sidewalk, which will probably, planning to incorporate some pervious pavers along the side of the building. In addition to that, on the plan, we've included landscaping improvements, maybe on the next slide.
Well, Jim, before we go to that, just, just one question for you. So they're, they're adding three parking spaces for these as required under the ordinance for the three units. But I believe in Mr. Bridger and, and Mr. Purcell's memo, they note that there, there is room and for, I believe, seven or eight cars really to park along as they do now, the northern end of this easement. Is that correct? So whatever's there now is essentially being preserved or maintained and then three additional spots are, are being added. Is that?
That's, that's correct. That parking area will remain, you know, and it won't be encumbered or modified or reduced in any way.
Okay, so here we are to slide 10.
Uh, in terms of landscaping improvements, we've included series of shade trees that were requested as part of the prior review and the Sprab review. I think we have upwards of six additional shade trees as well as shrubs, perennials, and some other ground covers in and around the building. As you can see here, we've included some native species as part of that species selection for the landscaping plan. And then additionally, we've included a, an evergreen buffer element along the south property line at the rear of the building, where the building abuts the outdoor area of the neighboring property to the immediate south to provide some privacy and a screening element at that location. We're currently, there's a, an overgrown hedgerow at that location. The, the thought and the intent is to still provide that screening with a new evergreen planting arrangement.
Got it. Uh, two, two other questions, Jim. One, um, I, I believe there's currently a fence, but there's a, a, you know, part of the proposal is to, to improve that fence with a, I guess, a, a newer privacy fence here. Is that correct?
Yes. Um, the, the plan would include a, a new board-on-board privacy fence along the property line, which would basically provide that separation from the adjacent properties.
Got it. And, and, and one here, I just want to note, there was a comment, and I'm embarrassed that this ever got slipped through, but there were, there were, one, one of the earlier plans, someone slipped in a, a, a tree that was on the invasive species strike team do not plant list, and we're certainly agreeing to, to, and this is a personal embarrassment of mine, the nonprofit that maintain, that runs the strike forces, one that I'm involved with. And, uh, so it just, the applicant is, is committed to planting native species here and not to use trees from that list.
Yeah, we can certainly swap that, that species out for that tree selection for something that works for the, the town arborist or the, the board engineer.
Thank you.
Additionally, in, in terms of drainage, this plan incorporates some of the prior comments from Sprab and the staff reports to provide, where currently there, there isn't any existing stormwater infrastructure or management. This would include a series of drywells to manage increases in stormwater runoff from the property, which have been volumetrically sized to exceed the town's standards for this project. As part of the review as well, it was requested by, by Sprab to add some perimeter curbing around the end of the parking area as well as an inlet in the parking area. I think on, on a previous plan, the, the drywall was located in the open space area, but it was requested by staff and Sprab to relocate that into the parking area. So that system has been, has been located accordingly.
Excellent. And, and Jim, the, I guess, the, 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 per square foot gallons that you've proposed here, it, it does exceed the Princeton's requirements. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, it does.
Whenever someone puts that in a memo that we're exceeding requirements, I have to highlight it. It's a requirement as an attorney. All right, now.
I, I'm sorry, can I just ask real quickly, the staff report said that the proposed system would manage three gallons?
Then on, on the, I, I think that was a.
Next slide said four gallons. Was, was that a change?
Well, I think the, the town standard was the three gallons.
No, I think the, the report said two.
If, if I can clarify, Jim Purcell here, and Jerry, you need to swear me in.
You can raise your right hand?
I am.
I'm sorry. Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give us, will be the truth?
I do.
So swear.
Yes, the town standard is two gallons per square foot if there is a a, a way to discharge it that does not impact adjoining property owners. Otherwise, you need to manage three gallons per square foot. In this case, the design manages four gallons per square foot. So I'm, I'm not, if my description of that in my report was not clear, hopefully that clears it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so now here we are on slide 13, and Jim, I know we talked a little bit about this, but let's, let's just dive into a little bit. You know, you've shaded here the existing condition really of this common access driveway that the neighbors all use and that this site would use. You know, this, the, many of the properties in this neighborhood front essentially onto what is called Humbert Place. They've got, you know, street addresses actually with that for, for mailing purposes. And you've shaded it in a couple ways here. Can we talk about what, you know, where, where people park now and what the applicant is, is prepared to do to make sure that that can, can continue fairly with them?
Sure. Well, currently there is parking. If you look at the rear in the red hatched area for that particular dwelling.
So is, is that, that, that's, I don't know if anyone can see my pointer, if, if you can't, that the back home is 10-10-12 Humbert Place, and I believe this shaded area is the one you're referring to right below that?
Right. That's an existing easement for access and, and, and parking as well.
Got it. So, and, and that easement provided a, one permanent space and a license for a second, and the, the applicant is going to maintain that and access to that. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Um, uh, moving forward, I guess, or to the left to six to eight Humbert Place, this is a duplex. I, I don't believe they have any deeded parking spaces. Is that your understanding under the easement?
That's my understanding, yes.
But the applicant is, is prepared to modify or to, to stipulate that two spaces in this curbside parallel parking area would be available to them. Is that your understanding of the plan?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then beyond that, there have been room for several other cars. I believe Mr. Bridger believed it was seven to eight in total. Is that, that's generally your understanding?
Generally, yes.
Okay. Um, and those are in addition to the three spaces that are being created in the back of the lot specifically for the, the renters, as we heard earlier, likely of these homes.
Correct.
Uh, is, is your understanding that anything about what will be done here that changes or modifies or, or, you know, impairs the access that the, the neighbors have to the neighborhood parking?
No, I, I believe all the access that exists now will remain. So the site layout was catered to what those restrictions are.
Got it. Um, and, and this area, um, you know, what type of material is it now, and the applicant's going to be improving it? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, the intent is for it to be paved, paved asphalt. Currently now, it's a compacted gravel surface.
Got it. Okay. So, uh, Jim, we, you know, we, we did allude to this at the beginning. There are a few variances here. You want to take a, a minute to, to, to take the board through the, the four ones that are flagged that are, you know, which ones are kind of existing as a result of that shared access way and, 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 and what we're looking at here for, for the bulk variance approval?
Sure. Yeah, I had mentioned previously the minimal usable open space where 1,200 is provided and 1,800 is the minimum requirement. There is a indicated in terms of the, the side yard setback, we're proposing an, an eight-foot setback for that. Uh, and that's related to the, the orientation of these, this attached dwelling arrangement as it fronts on Linden Lane. And then at the rear of the property, we have a minimum driveway setback relief that's being requested, which is associated with, it's in the northeast corner of the property where that driveway comes close in the existing condition to the the neighbor's property. We want to maintain that, have continuity in the access driveway. So where the ordinance says a five feet minimum is required, two feet is proposed at that location in order to maintain continuity in the driveway. The plan was revised where previously there was less than five feet to the parking stall from the rear property line, and that, that area was adjusted to eliminate that variance. And also in terms of the impervious coverage, maximum impervious coverage, where 51.8% is existing and 70.9% is proposed. The allowable per the ordinance is 36%, and relief is requested for that as well, which to, to a large extent is driven by the, the extent of this access lane and parking area that's impervious, that is located on the applicant's lot, which really drives that number up to the, the 70.9%.
Finally, I know this is one that I still been practicing in, in Princeton for, for a while now. Still it's hard for me to wrap my head around the, the, the distance between buildings and windows and rooms of other buildings under section 383. Could you help me and the board with that one?
Yeah, this is a, a calculation that's in the ordinance where, based upon the details of the length of the building and the proximity to the property line, the required distance of 14.6 feet was required. And in this particular case, the applicant's proposing 12.4 feet, which is a 2.2 foot difference. It's about, you know, a 15% deviation in terms of that distance requirement. But we note that where the, the previous building was as close as 5.7 feet, it's actually being moved further away with this design to eight feet. So that is being increased, but there, there's a minor deviation there with respect to that, that setback distance.
Got it. Madam Chairwoman, uh, you know, Jim is wearing two hats tonight. I was curious, you know, you know, we've got his engineering testimony out essentially, and we'll do his planning testimony, but I, I wondered if, uh, just from a run-of-show perspective, if, if, if you were the board or professionals, any, any questions for him in an engineering capacity before we switch over to his, uh, planning testimony?
Well, let's see. Um, does anyone have a question?
I, I do, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So the, the big question I have, Jim, is if you can explain a little bit about the configuration of those three parking spaces. They seem to be very deep, maybe 10 feet off of the driveway. If, I, I understand you probably need that for turnaround, except if you could push them a little bit further from the rear property line and create a little turnaround at the end of the drive, it seems like you could push them way, way closer to the driveway and create a lot less impervious coverage and more open space for the property. Also, the, the radius of the curve accessing those parking spaces seems enormous. And if you tightened up that curve, you would also free up some open space. And I'm just curious if you have a reason for why you laid it out the way you did that I'm not seeing.
I, my understanding is that there was an intent to have some have the backout area from these stalls available without having or minimizing the encroachment during the backout turning movement on that access easement for the adjacent dwelling, that hatched area. So I think that that may have been some input that came back from staff on that to, to have that movement you know, be provided more of an open area there.
So there's. Does, does someone from staff want to comment on that, if it came from staff?
I'll comment on the fact that that may have been a comment that was not written by Jack West prior to my coming on board, but
Okay.
I don't see why. I, I, I wouldn't have the same opinion. Jim?
Yeah. And we can take a look at that. I mean, if, if there's some efficiencies there where staff feels like that can be tightened up, that could minimize some of the impervious and
And increase your open space.
Yeah.
Actually, maybe even fit a rain garden at the end of the parking spaces if you did that, which could create some more green infrastructure instead of just the drywell. So I think it's a whole, it's a whole slew of benefits you would get if you could make it work.
Uh, it sounds like a, sounds like a fantastic idea, and just assuming that we don't stumble upon you know, the, the reason for, for Jack's suggestion, if that's where it came from. I, I think that's something that the applicant would, would certainly work towards. And we'll be happy to do.
Great, great. And then the, the one other thing is, has any soil testing been done to indicate that the drywells will function as proposed?
Yes.
That's all I have.
This is Louise. I, I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
It's about the drywells. Um, I mean, it, putting on my flood and stormwater committee hat, you know, drywells are just not a first choice. Generally speaking, not a first choice stormwater management. You know, best management practice. And so I'm, my, I guess my question is, well, first of all, I was very glad to hear about the willingness to entertain adding more open space and perhaps putting a rain garden to help manage more stormwater with a natural system. But I'm, can you explain how water quality, water filtering is done with a with a drywall? Does it go through a filter on its way in into that area of the, you know, the, the underground well part?
Well, that's something that we can incorporate into this. I think the intent of some of the input that came back from Sprab was to try to collect, instead of collecting roof water into the drywall to try to pick up, to put an inlet uh, within the paved area to pick up runoff from the driveway. Um, and like you say, that then perhaps some treatment for water quality would be advantageous, something like a, you know, an inlet with a suspended solids pit within it so that we can get some, some deposition of particles or suspended solids, materials. You know, we're certainly open to you know, providing an additional element for it taking that, that water. But that, I think that was a suggestion that came from Sprab, add an inlet, pick up some of that water back there in the rear. Uh, and that was the change that we made.
Okay, um, I, I have another question, but it's probably not for you. So I think I'll wait, I, I think it is a question for the architect or builder. It has to do with the basement areas. So I, I'll hold that until later.
I, I have a, a, two questions. In terms of David's other point about reducing the radius of that curve going into the parking spaces, I, I take it you'll work on that also as part of the redesign of that back area?
Yeah, we can take a look at that as well.
Okay. Then second, on the application, and maybe this is out of date, but one of the ordinance, one of the variances that the, the application indicates would be requested is for the right side yard setback. It's 20 feet. It's going to be reduced. Well, it's going to be eight feet, which is actually more than the, the, what was the existing condition. But I didn't see that in that list of variances on that slide you showed.
So thi- this application was filed, you know, gosh, maybe 18 months ago and was revised, you know, moderately after Sprab. So my understanding is that the, the noticed variances uh, and the ones in the joint engineering member memo are the current ones. The original project was, was revised for the, for the with a different setback.
Oh, thank you. That's all I had.
Anyone else? No? All right, let's move on then.
All right. Thank you. Um, so. so Jim, we we do have those four variances and we have a a neighborhood photo here. I'll let you tell me which one you'd like to have up there while we're speaking, but if we could you know, go through, look, I I I understand we're going to have a some some testimony from a from a neighbor. So I think we'll reserve a a little bit to on 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 some rebuttal on some of these things. But Jim, if you could just kind of get through the the basic frame of of some of these variances initially for us.
Sure. Well, in terms of the impervious coverage, as I mentioned, section two fifty eight where the ordinance calls for thirty six percent as being allowed, I'm 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 assuming and you know, I can I can be corrected if that's not the case, but I I believe that these impervious coverage standards standards most likely post date. You know, the the nineteen twenty construction of this building as well as a lot of the development of the old buildings and parking areas that you can see on this on this aerial view here. So as you can see in the aerial view, there there is a significant prominence of expanded parking areas as well as garages at the rear of the properties. In addition to the the main, you know, dwellings on on the properties where there's a significant amount of impervious coverage that exists already in the neighborhood. And as I mentioned previously, this the combined parking arrangement with the access driveway, the fact that that additional parking area is included within the overall impervious coverage. You know, we we took a look at it and determined that if we we were to arrange or rearrange the applicant's driveway without the additional width for the parking access and and the driveway for the impervious coverage. The impervious coverage would be similar to the existing condition of approximately fifty percent in that ballpark. You know, so so at least our view on this is that, you know, there's an inherent encumbrance of on the property that the the property owner needs to bear for that impervious coverage. We certainly don't want to eliminate it because we want to keep that, you know, open and available for the neighboring properties as well as this opportunity to increase parking for them, you know, from an easement standpoint and perspective. So, you know, so that's that's our our overall view on that. We don't feel like it is inconsistent. You know, with with the rest of the neighborhood, as you can see here on the aerial view with a significant amount of of parking areas behind many of these structures. So at least from that that encumbrance, you know, we we see this request partially from a C one hardship condition. Something that they need to deal with for any development here on the property. And then number two, in the flexible C context where the benefits, at least we feel here with this lead certified, green building and development outweigh the detriments. With the addition of the two additional parking spaces that would be provided for Humbert. And then taking that parking demand away from that area along the property line by adding three more stalls at the rear just dedicated solely for this building. So from our view, we don't see a substantial detriment to this to the impervious coverage variance on this. And we think the benefits of making these modifications, you know, in addition, the opportunities for some additional stormwater management features, all those things weigh in the favor of of granting relief on this in our view.
Then Jim, on the on the setbacks for parking in particular, those were, you know, essentially existing conditions, some of which are being you know, ameliorated to an extent by the application, but when it again, just very quickly take through the the
Yeah, so for
native perspective than C one perspective.
They they required side yard setback in that north north corner, rear corner of the site where five feet is required and two feet is proposed again.
Let let me interrupt for a second. It's it'll probably be worthwhile for the board if you can go back to the site plan. Slide.
Spronley. Apologies. Let me let me get back. I was in a view that did not let me go backwards for some reason.
Thanks.
So Ryan, if you could just highlight that upper right hand corner of the site and far in the back of the parking lot there.
Yeah. This area here.
Go up one, go back to the site plan, please. The last slide, there you go. Yeah. So just to the left, just to the left in that whole area, that's the two foot setback, but we really want to keep continuity of the travel way. So we we prefer not to have that that edge of pavement bump out to comply with the five feet. It's basically in that location, the existing condition, and we think it's best to keep it there. So it's really sort of a functional reason for it. And and we don't see any impact, significant or appreciable impact from that because it that basically exists less than five feet in that location. In terms of the buildings, I think that was our our other variance.
Yep.
That we were we were requesting. I I did provide some testimony as to that for supporting reasons for that where fourteen point six feet is required and twelve point four is proposed. Again, the building is being moved several feet away from the property in the proposed condition, the proposed building will be narrower than the existing building is. And as I mentioned, it's a fifteen percent deviation from that requirement. So, you know, from our view. We feel as though, you know, providing that walkway, providing the same with an access way on the Humbert Lane access drive on the other side of the building, these are constraints that really drive strict conformance with with the way the building has been designed currently and the relief is sought. But but we see this with with all the attributes and and elements of the building that are being installed, we definitely see that this would certainly outweigh that minor deviation of fifteen percent in terms of that setback from the adjacent building.
Right. And I think Jim, you 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 talked earlier about the 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 open space requirement and that with Mr. Kohan's actual suggestion, if we can implement that, that 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 variance could potentially decrease as well as the the coverage decrease once that if that could be redesigned.
Yeah, I think that's something that we can we can look at. Again, we're working within these constraints of of freeing up more area for parking, thus putting those three stalls in the back. If we didn't have to do that and we had open space across the rear property line. We would easily comply with the eighteen hundred square feet. However, these improvements and these additional elements that we're including as part of this layout really lend itself to a slightly reduced open space area which would be shared anyway, but would satisfy the minimum requirement for two units at any one time. But there may be opportunities for us, you know, if we take a look at that back area and see if if there's a way that we can reduce things a little bit and maybe increase that a bit.
Thank you, Jim. So with that and 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 you know, reserving for some rebuttal, I believe, and so I think we'll we'll hear some things from one of the neighbors. I want to thank the board and I know there were some potentially some some other questions board members had either for the applicant or the architect. There's both certainly here and we'd love to 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 respond to them if there are questions.
All right.
I had a question. There was a reference earlier to purvious pav- pavers. Wh- where would they be?
We were proposing to include those along the walkway along the side of the building.
Okay. Along the entire walkway?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is Louise. I I'll pose my other question now, if that's all right. Regarding the basement, the basements plural. Is there a plan to have, are they are they going to be finished or or is there a plan to have sump pumps installed?
At the moment, no. This is gonna be essentially a
poured concrete foundation.
Yeah, maybe one of your, I think you might be on the phone and have your computer on. So maybe if you mute your or turn the volume down on your on your computer, we're gonna get an echo.
Okay, is this better?
Better?
No.
No. How about now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Did it.
Boy, I'm about about a thousand tonight. Yeah, anyway, these these are going to be poured concrete walls and there's going to be no no finish, no plans to finish them. And the I guess as far as some pumps, I'm not aware of any underground or aquifers or any reason to have some pumps in this basement. If we get further into the design, it turns out there will be. I could coordinate with Jim and see if there's something that needs to be done here, but at the moment, no, there's no plan to have some pumps in here. These foundations will have proper footing drains installed and waterproof walls. So the technology today is a lot better than a lot of our homes with regards to water pumps and needs for them.
Okay. Yeah, I I I just think that given Princeton's soil and water table, it's worth a good large, good hard look. And I I think you sort of spoke to this when you were showing the aerial view of the neighborhood, but I guess this is really a question for our own professional. And maybe maybe Michael is the right person. Is this a neighborhood like my own, actually, where the existing dwellings do not tend to not conform with zoning when it comes to setbacks and coverage and that kind of thing? Is it is it one of those neighborhoods or or am I mistaken about that?
Um, I based on sort of an anecdotal experience of walking around the neighborhood. I would say that it's a mix and that there are certainly many examples throughout the neighborhood of, you know, preexisting nonconforming situations in terms of setbacks. That would be my my observation.
Yeah. I I have a question also about the open space area and how whether anyone has envisioned how the people who live in the middle home slash unit. You know, what open space they're expected to use if it's the open space in the rear. It seems to be like right outside a big window from the rear home. And maybe maybe an awkward place to spend leisure time when you're yeah, anyway, I I'm just wondering about how you envision the open space being used by all three families.
Akash, you want to take that perhaps, you know, if there's any programming thoughts back there for for how you'd have your tenants use that?
So we're we're talking, I'm sorry, would you, are you able to hear me?
It's a little quiet, but I I think we can.
Yeah, okay. So the question is, if I'm understanding correctly, is how would the unit in the middle sort of have access to the open space?
I think so. I think that's the question, yes.
Yes, is there is there a plan for that space that or how do you envision them using it in a way? How do you envision that space not being in effect? The yard space of the home that's closest to it, just as the front yard will seem like it's you know, associated with the unit closest to the street. Do you see what I'm saying that there's?
And if I can, if I can tag on to that question, because this is related. Sprab had suggested doing a larger front porch facing Humbert Street, which could really help to meet the needs of outdoor you know, enjoyment for the front unit. And you know, you're sort of presenting this open space that's available as being sufficient for two of the three units. At any one time, I would think that it would make a lot of sense to make some provision for the front unit with that kind of a larger front porch that would then put less less pressure on the open space in the rear to be used by all three units.
Yeah, I agree with that.
A larger front porch though is going to add more impervious coverage. So that's something to think about. In regards to the access to the open space, each of these units has a deck with stairs just to grade this to the grass area. So anybody can use it. Somebody just has a further walk than another, but basically they all have decks with steps in the back to grade.
It seems to me that it if it that this is not completely transparently clear from my question. That it creates a sort of an awkward position situation for the people in the middle, unless there's a particular plan for that open space that makes clear it's used by everybody and is not the, you know, the yard of the home that's right next to it.
Yeah, so I think, let me try to answer that. So once you 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 kind of go to to the front sidewalk and that kind of takes you over to the open space here. And the way I think it sort of makes it as a common spaces because right next to it are three parking spots that are assigned to each unit. And each parking spot has an electronic vehicle charger. So each each townhome would get each parking space assigned to it with a electronic vehicle charger. And so that's sort of, you know, when you're seeing those three chargers and each unit, each townhome has each spot, it's sort of defines that as more of a common space that surrounds the entire property as opposed to allocating just that, you know, unit all the way in the back to say, well, this is your entire backyard. If that that answers, Ms. Wilson, your answer.
I don't, yeah, to be honest, I don't know if it really matters, to be honest. I I think that, you know, people will probably use it however they want to. I mean, it might be kind of de facto the end units backyard, but I mean, I I feel like as, you know, renters you know, in in a multifamily type of unit, you know, open space is sort of, you know, determined by whoever wants to use it. I mean, I think that the the space that mo- most likely they'll use is the space that's behind their their units. Which, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's a little tight, but I think that, you know, if you have a kid, you know, they're probably going to play some ball in the the field that's over there. I mean, I think that you know, a it the the space is kind of limited, but you know, it would be interesting to see, you know, some more vegetation, potentially a rain garden, maybe behind the parking area. You know, maybe with some native species. I think that, you know, it's good that you're managing, you know, the the stormwater with dry wells, although dry wells are notorious for not functioning very well. So I mean, it would be good to potentially use rain gardens as an alternative. And I I think that that space could be a good one, you know, where the cursor is.
Especially if to Mr. Cohen's point, if this can, this space can be expanded by shrinking up this this radius and and this turnaround area that this this green space increases and perhaps would be an excellent place for for a bioswale or grain rain garden or or some green feature.
Right.
That's 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 a that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, and also, yeah, if the spots can move to the left. Yeah, and also, yeah, if the spots can move to the left, you know, you might have some space in the back, the rear portion of the, um, so I, I think that, uh, I don't know if this could go to the landscape subcommittee for, I guess, uh, potential revisions to the landscape, but I, that's something that I would, I would certainly like to see. And, um, yeah, maybe even in the front as well, you know, having some, some, something other than just grass. So, um, I, I guess it's hard to tell because this isn't the landscape plan. I have, uh, some questions about the architecture, if we could change the subject. Um, I do commend the applicant for all its, um, all its efforts for, you know, green building and commitment to green building. Um, although I, I do, um, I wanna ask some questions about, uh, like, you know, insulation and heating systems. Uh, I don't know, do, do you know what type of heating system you plan on using?
Uh, we do, we actually are going to use a Mitsubishi, uh, system. And so we have used some of those systems, there are energy efficient systems. Uh, with the, some of the certifications, we do have to, uh, get these approvals from our consultants, which gets, which have the EPA and the New Jersey Clean Energy Program certifications that sort of, um, uh, have to stay within that framework. So the, uh, the system is, I, I think what we have selected with our, uh, with our HVAC contractor is a very high-end Mitsubishi system, which is an extremely efficient system. And it take, it's, it's a lot smaller footprint.
Is it natural gas or is it a heat pump?
It would be a heat pump.
Oh, great. Okay.
Yeah, it would be a heat pump, I would say about somewhere between, uh, six, six, I'd say between five to eight zones. So each room would have, it's, they will have the capability to set their own temperature.
Would it be a mini split or would it be a ducted?
It would be a ducted system.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, I don't know if it's possible, but, um, you know, typically, I mean, cool, cool climate air source heat pumps are pretty good these days, but, um, you know, geothermal systems are really good and that could be potentially installed, you know, with that space in the back. Um, geothermal is by far the most efficient type of system. So that's good to hear. Um, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, lead silver is good, although, um, you know, that's, that's sort of like the base standard, which, I mean, uh, it would be good to, to see a little bit more, um, there. And also, um, you know, one of the things that we're really trying to push on the Environmental Commission is the passive house standard. And I, I really, um, recommend that the applicant look into, to meeting that standard, which means that it, the, the structure would be highly insulated and, um, you know, you wouldn't really need too much, um, actual heating systems from, you know, the HVAC, you know, it would be insulated enough where you could essentially, you know, heat it with the air dryer, or I mean, a, a hairdryer, um, or toaster oven almost. Um, so I, I think that, you know, that's, that's really the way of the future. I think that all, all buildings really should be moving towards passive house standard. Um, and, uh, also, I, I guess, is there plans for, for solar? I, I don't, I didn't see anything about solar in the application.
So we, uh, certainly have the electronic vehicle chargers. Um, I, I think there were some concerns about some of the radiation that comes out of solar panels. Uh, so we've sort of, uh, you know, it's sort of counter interacts with some of the other, uh, indoor air quality, sort of a living we're, we're, we're trying to have for our occupants. Uh, and certainly, um, you know, if we can incorporate that, you know, we certainly, uh, would, we're, we're open for discussion on that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that that would be, uh, that would be great. I mean, you know, solar on rental units are tricky because, um, you know, uh, it's usually the benefits go to the renter. Um, you know, I mean, the, 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 the renter ends up, you know, not having to pay as much on the utility bill. But I mean, I think that, um, you know, if you could commit to doing that, I think that that would be, um, much better environmentally. I, I'm not quite sure about, you know, how that might conflict with air quality or radiation. I mean, uh, millions of people are using solar installation, so I think that it, it's a pretty, uh, established practice. Um, so, but yeah, I mean, I think that, uh, you know, that with the combination of a highly efficient building, uh, is, is really the way of the future. And I think that, you know, that would show significant commitment to, uh, green building and, and, you know, the environment and sustainability. So those are kind of some of my thoughts in terms of the architecture.
Yeah.
Maybe Phil, I see, I see Phil ready to chime in.
Yeah, I'd like to add to the Zenon's comments. Um, the, the passive house, um, they have a extremely stricter, much stricter standard for air leakage. So I do hope that you have discussions with your contractor to, uh, work through a lot of the details with air leakage. Um, and that would really save a lot of energy. It's not just all about insulation. Um, you know, it's, it's your window to wall ratio as well as your air leakage. So, um, and air leakage is one of the cheapest things to deal with. So if you start from the beginning with a tight building, you will save a lot of energy. Um, other thing I wanted to ask is, uh, since you are seeking Energy Star certification, are you taking advantage of the state's, uh, Clean Energy Program, uh, with the subsidies?
Uh, we are, uh, part of that New Jersey Clean Energy Program, so we are, um, we are going to take that certification, yes.
Yes, okay, good. Cause yeah, it's like thirty dollars per MM BTU saved, uh, per, you know, per standard building. So I hope you take advantage of that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I should also mention real quickly, I know I see David's hand, uh, but, um, with passive house, not only are they, um, yeah, thanks for clarifying Phil with about the, the ceiling, but the, the airflow actually, um, has an exchange. So it usually uses actually outdoor air, which is much healthier. You know, you talk about healthy air quality. It's actually the most, the healthy, um, you know, system, type of system for, for air quality, because it exchanges, you know, the in, indoor air with outdoor air, whereas, you know, other types of systems typically just recirculate indoor air, so.
Yeah, I mean, Steve, yeah, I, I think just to add to that, you know, even with the water heater, we're kind of using, if you're not aware, like a Bradford, uh, water heater that actually, uh, it's more, you know, uses the indoor air to, uh, heat the water. So it's not one of those gas water heaters, but it is a very energy efficient water heater that uses indoor gas, indoor air to heat the water. Uh, and then of course, you know, we have the zero energy ready, zero ready, home energy ready program, which sort of determines how far we can, you know, store that hot water within the water pipes that we, uh, we lay out.
So, so is the building, I'm sorry, just real quick on, on that, uh, there's no natural gas? You're, you're completely electrified then?
Uh, we do have natural gas, uh, since, uh, you know, uh, where, um, the natural gas would be used for the stove.
Um, but not for space heating and not for domestic hot water?
Uh, the space heating and domestic hot water, it is more energy efficient to use one of those heat pumps, the Bradford, uh, to take that indoor air. Uh, and so that is a much better system than using a gas propelled system. And that's, these are the recommendations that we have already talked about a little bit with our consulting firm and along with our HVAC and plumbing contractors.
You could almost go all the way with induction stoves and just not have natural gas hookups.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sorry, David.
That's okay. So I, but I did wanna pick up on the, the idea of the nets are already in the, the solar panels. Um, first with a question, when, when, uh, they look at whether the house is net zero ready, do they look at the amount of renewable energy you are actually able to generate with the surface that you have available for solar panels? Or is it just more of a measure of how much energy you're using and they don't?
They don't. I think, yeah, with zero, zero net energy program, they do, uh, and I think that's, uh, that's why, that's they do use thirty percent, there, there's a calculation in terms of whether that roof is facing certain direction towards the sun. And there is a thirty percent or a certain amount of space that is available for solar panels to be put in. So you have to, in order to get that certification, uh, if there is a room for solar panels to be put, that's part of that program. Uh, you, then what you have to do is you have to run a connection for future solar panels. That is one of the criteria there.
Yeah, the, the reason I asked the question is that, um, while I understand your desire to have the hip roof for sort of lowering the profile of the building, uh, those triangular shaped roofs or even trapezoidal shaped roofs, they're very difficult to efficiently lay out solar panels on them. And so I would encourage you to look at going back to a gabled roof configuration so that you can better lay out the solar panels on the south-facing, uh, roof surface that you have really running all along the length of the building. The building is well-oriented for solar panels, but I think you'll, you'll find them easier to, to lay out, uh, if you go away from the hip roof form.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Um, Madam Chair, this is Michael. May I make a, a brief announcement to everyone?
Sure.
Um, I apologize on behalf of staff for the confusion, but people should, and this goes for both board members and members of the public. Please do not use the Q and A function. This is a public hearing and all questions have to be presented in, in person on the record. Uh, so we apologize, but please do not use the question, the Q and A function or the chat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to chime in. I have my hand up and I, I know that not all board members can be seen in this, in this configuration. But I had a, a few questions and, and observation. One is simple, what's, what's the height of the basement going to be? So I'm standing in the basement on the floor, how high is the ceiling above? I understand that this is an unfinished basement, correct?
Could be nine feet clearance.
All right, wonderful, thank you. And I just wanted to clarify, I believe that I heard early on that, that, um, someone said that there was a ninety-nine percent chance that these would be rental properties, which leaves a one percent chance that they would be for sale. So can we get some clarity on that? Is it rent at first and then with the possibility that they be sale units?
Um, so we're certainly not seeking to, uh, have a condominiumize them. Uh, and the reason I put one percent is, uh, at this time, we're not seeking that, you know, there should be any sort of a, um, association, homeowners association, uh, adopted, you know, with, with this, uh, for this construction. And so the one percent is really maybe, uh, at some point, you know, like future ten, twenty years, uh, down the road. If, if, uh, it, it, you know, there's a possibility that it, you know, if we can separate it and we would like to sell it, um, there is that one percent possibility I put it out there, but.
All right, thank you. And, and my observation has to do with the open space, the green area, and I, I'm, I'm always, uh, in awe of my colleagues and their, their great desire regarding stormwater and, uh, and rain gardens and, um, and I share their concerns. That said, um, if these units are big enough for a family, um, there, it's a, it's a highly desirable location in town. And I had the great pleasure of knowing the Brooks family and, um, my, my grown child actually played in that open space, uh, at the time. Um, but while it's a desirable location, there's not a park that's, that's easily accessible for toddlers. So I would say, yes, uh, let's manage stormwater as well as we can, but let's also balance that with the fact that there might be infants and toddlers who would wanna use, um, a, a lawn rather than playing a rain garden. Thank you.
All right, anyone else at this point? I think.
Some objectors attorney has his hand raised.
Yes.
Yes, this, this is John Pidgen. Would this be an appropriate time for me to ask some questions of Mr. Chmohlik?
Uh,
I defer to you, I'm just asking at this point.
Yeah, I think, I want to make sure that we, we get through the board questions and, and with these other questions that are still floating around before we doubt of it.
That's right, I'll, I'll take my hand down. Thank you.
We should, we should have a public period for this discussion and that could be now or could be later. How many of you are here who?
Madam Chair, I think if the board is done asking questions on the presentation, maybe it would be time to allow the public to ask questions on the presentation.
I think that, I think that's a good idea. So why don't, why don't we open this to the public at this point and, um?
Okay, I wanted to advise, there are thirty-two members in attendance. We have three members of the public with their hands raised. Uh, the first is Mr. David Zinkin and then Mr. Labib. So I will move Mr. Zinkin over.
Okay.
Mr. Zinkin, can you put your camera on, please?
And unmute yourself.
Is it possible that Mr. Zinkin is muted by one of our hosts or co-hosts by mistake or?
No, I did not do that.
I will just comment that I know he raised his hand extremely early.
Yes.
The meeting and he may have fallen asleep. Um, so maybe we.
Well, I'll leave him in that place and we'll move Mr. Labib over for now.
Okay.
That, that never happens in a planning board meeting, David.
We don't talk about it.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mohamed Labib here. I have.
Yeah, sir, um, we, we swear on all members of the public who are giving testimony. So if you can raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Uh, Mohamed Labib, L A B I B.
Thank you.
Um, I am a neighbor of the, uh, the site. In fact, we, um, we own the, the lot number seventy-one, which is adjacent to the yard back there. And I have quite a bit of concern on the, the, uh, the twelve, the twelve foot difference in the application to the side yard, uh, is quite a bit, making the two, this site is very close to the neighbors, to the south. And if you look at it carefully, if someone would develop the area where I'm talking about, then it would be very close, actually with quite a bit of, uh, prohibited, you know, privacy for both sides. It would be just looking at, uh, you know, someone else's bedroom. So I, I So I, I think this is quite a bit, I, I didn't expect that the distance is going to be so close. And it is not conforming to to the, to the requirements. I think we need to discuss that because we are just considering the, the development of this side, but we should look at the other side. For example, you know, my lot is seventy-one. Twenty-one Humbert Street would be very close. And I, I don't know how can we handle that?
Is there a drawing we could put up?
Also, the, the dimensions are not very clear in the site plan you put it in the board.
Okay, now which is the lot you're, you're talking about?
My lot is here, all the green up to the end of twenty-one here. And this, this setback of twelve feet from here, okay, is, is really very, very narrow. Quite concerning because also because of the orientation of the new site, there is no building on the back because this is going to be extended, extended by Humbert Lane. So any development of the site I'm talking about is going to be very close. Especially if you have these balconies or a yard at the back in the brown.
Jim, perhaps you want to talk a little bit about the, the screening that's happening along this southern boundary here?
Yeah, I, I guess two things I would just offer as a, a response to your question. We certainly, you know, understand the two questions there that the setback of the new building will be greater from the property line than the existing building is currently today in that vicinity by approximately three feet or so. And then from the rear edge of your dwelling adjacent to that property line. As I mentioned before, we, we worked to include an evergreen buffer, arbiviti buffer along that property line to serve to provide some privacy for that backyard area and minimize view of that air, of, of the new, the back portion or the back two units of the building from that vicinity. So, you know, we hear the concern and, you know, those are the, the elements that we work to try to incorporate to address those.
Yeah, my point here is the, 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 the previous dwelling did not extend that far. And this area, we've never thought is going to be developed that way. So that's of a concern of ours and probably some of the other neighbors. And also the areas in the brown, which is, looks like a balcony or something, is going to be very close to the side, you know, the side yard.
Okay, any? Any other neighbors want to talk about this or?
Actually, we do have four people with their hands raised. Mr. Zinkin is back, so I'm a little confused. He's in two different places. So I'm, I'm going to ask him to talk and hopefully we'll be able to address his concerns.
Okay, well. Did you catch?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Zinkin?
Yes, that's, I live at ten Humbert Lane.
Oh, sir, sir, could you put on your video?
Excuse me?
Could you put on your video?
I don't know how. I've never done this before.
Okay.
Hold on one minute. I'm going to move you from one, you, you're in here twice. So I think it's causing a problem.
Yeah, well, it didn't work on my laptop, so I switched to my phone.
Okay.
Turn the laptop off because you're getting a, you're getting a backfeed.
There you go.
I don't know why you can't see me. I can see four of you.
Okay, um, as I, I'm the planning board attorney, as I explained to the last witness, we swear in, all members of the public will testify as we do all witnesses. So if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, of course. I, I'm only expressing concerns. I don't know how, whether a concern can be truthful or not, but I'm going to be sincere.
Okay.
I live at ten Humbert Lane. There is no twelve. It's just ten. It's the last half on the other side. And I'm seventy-six years old. I'm not in the best of health. And I'm not concerned about parking, but I am concerned about egress to the street. Am I to understand that there will be no parking alongside the new building?
That's correct. There'll be no parking alongside the new building.
And how will that be enforced? What if somebody comes to visit and parks alongside there and I have to go to the hospital? Well.
It'd be a condition to the, the site plan and it's the way the easement is written now. That would, that would violate likely the, the current easement.
Yeah, but I could be, I could be dying while, you know, they can violate it. So what's, what are the consequences of violating it?
Imagine that you could call the police and they would tow, tow the car.
Okay, that, that would be, so I would be allowed to do that. Okay, that's really my major concern, although I agree with the other gentleman that the property is, you know, it, it's way, way too large. It, you know, my view will be expressed. It's nice to see a little greenery. I, I, I personally think two units would be a lot better than three. That's just my opinion. You can go on to the next person.
Thank you. Is there a next person, Carrie? Carrie, is there?
Yes, we have five, five members of the public with their hands raised out of thirty-two attendees. The next two individuals are Lee Gibson and Andrew Tolland. So I will move Lee over.
If, if you could raise your right hand? If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please.
I congratulate the owner on a really wonderful demolition. I walk by the house multiple times a day and it was really well done and considerate of all neighbors. I am confused about how the discussion to date has not targeted the additional third unit. Clearly, the removal of the third unit would be the best way to maximize green space and meet the variances. I asked the committee to think extremely hard about the standard it will set in this neighborhood for future variance requests. Nearly all of the lots are non-conforming. This lot has the potential to be developed as a two-family home without seeking probably any variances, or at least not on the scale that are imagined here. The precedent that this will set on Humbert Street for the redevelopment of a number of homes that are clearly in rental properties and in, in decline will be enormous. There's plenty of space here for adequate housing. I don't know why we as neighbors owe the, this new owner the privilege at our expense of a third unit, especially when the most immediate neighbors are not citing particularly, particular enthusiasm for the advantages that the owner is claiming they will gain from the proposal in front of us. So please, if all of you have not taken a look at this, if the urban planner has not sketched out what would be the implications if similar percent variances issued on all the additional houses that will likely be redeveloped in the next few years, please give it a thought. You're going to turn the block in that particular side. The other side has got bigger lots, but that side will just become one long apartment building looking kind of thing. If that massive structures are replicated in every other redevelopment request that we see coming down the pipeline there. So thank you for your attention. I appreciate your service to this committee.
Thank you. Carrie, next person?
Yes, the next person is Andrew Tolland and then Ronald Nielsen.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Andrew Tolland. Last name is spelled T O L L A N D. I'm a neighbor and a property owner on Humbert Street. And my biggest concern on this house actually is that not so much the size of it, the frontage is smaller than the old one, but it's a substantial change in character, knocking out the front porch and basically just putting a you know, a setback in an entryway. It seems like it would be in character of the neighborhood to grant a variance for them to actually put a front porch on, a substantial one. Secondarily, I noticed reading through the minutes of the 2020 meeting on this subject that the applicants were asked to investigate putting permeable pavers onto Humbert Lane. I'm curious if they did so. I don't see it in the plans. Instead, they've, you know, just decided to make a narrow walkway of permeable pavers. Grass pavers on Humbert Lane would by and large solve the problem. You'd be under fifty percent permeability. You'd have plenty of room for a porch. Why not go that way? Since I have one moment as a last bit, if you're going to rename Humbert Lane, rename it Tilly Lane. There is a cat there that everyone adores named Tilly. Everyone in the neighborhood will get the joke. All right. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Okay, the next individual is Ronald Nielsen and then Ann or Jim Ross. So let me move over Mr. Nielsen.
And, and while Mr. Nielsen's coming up, I just wanted to say that the, the applicant is, is certainly okay with, if we can find the, the coverage room for it to, to putting a, a traditional front porch on the front. In, in responding to the sprab comments, they did add that front sidewalk and kind of expanded a bit. But if we could shave some space off the back, they would certainly be willing to put a more traditional looking front porch on it. Unfortunately, I think switching to previous pavers along the drive wouldn't get us more coverage technically and whether Princeton works, but we'd certainly be willing to, to, to do that front porch.
Hello?
Yeah, if you could.
I, I, I had, I had my camera working and everything was working and then I got cut off.
Okay, we can hear you. If you could raise, we'll, we'll do this without the camera on. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Ronald C. Nielsen, N I E L S E N. I live at fourteen Humbert Street, across the street, little, little way down from the property being in question. I, my objection to this is that to replace two fairly sizable units with three smaller units is kind of downgrading this neighborhood. The characteristic of Humbert Street is one and two family structures. And I, I don't like the idea of, of a single structure with three units in it that are all kind of dinky. It's, it's too much reminiscent of, of, you know, workers, places like, what is it, Borden Town? The suggestion that I have, if I were going to redevelop that property, is to separate the two units into two separate houses with one house all the way at the back of the property, in which case all the neighbors would have some degree of open space. That's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person to speak is, it says Ann and Jim Ross, so they can identify themselves.
Okay.
Can you turn your video on, please?
No.
And you're muted. Could you unmute yourself? Okay.
I believe I did it?
Yep.
Yep, it did. Is, is it just?
Yes, just my Jim Ross.
Okay, good. If you could raise your right hand. You swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full names, spell your last name.
My name is James Ross, R O S S. I live across the street from the property and I live across the street from the property at twenty-humbert Street. I've never joined one of these before, so I'm learning as we go along here. I agree with, with the last few comments that what I was, Ron was talking about the size of this place, I thought to my, in my mind, like a Soviet era type of thing, structure. Putting this big structure in this neighborhood, I'm curious, I don't know how planning boards work. Do you, have you folks walked this neighborhood and seen this property? Because it's a very odd property, Humbert Lane, which is also called Humbert Place, which is to the north side is very narrow. I'm a bit confused where you're going with the parking, because if you're, you're putting three units, which I believe three units is way overkill for this neighborhood. Especially the middle unit, because quite, I'm not trying to be cruel, but I don't know who would want to rent it. To me, and there's no backyard. If you had kids, I would, I wouldn't put kids in there. And if it's students, they're going to have cars. They're going to have more cars and this, this property is going to be able to handle, number one. So there's going to be no place to play for kids. I believe the parking is a problem, will remain a problem if three units go in there. Comment earlier about the demolition. Yes, they were very careful. I agree with that, but the demolition is still going on. And if you go across the street, you can't see it now. It's nighttime, but there is heavy equipment. I'm not sure what they're called, but backhoes and all that type of stuff and heavy dump trucks that are sitting back there and have been for, I don't know, it's been two years this has been going on. It would start and stop when the gentlemen worked. They were very careful in, in doing it. But what, this has been a couple of years. It hasn't given a very good taste. I don't think anybody in the neighborhood that this eyesore. The, the old structure was an eyesore and it's been kind of replaced by heavy equipment eyesore. So I appreciate the, the care that was taken. But this is Princeton and cemetery is right down the street and it's very lovely. And across the street, we have this big yellow, heavy construction equipment just sitting there literally for months on end. So that's just, I guess, a comment. Also, the aerial photo, not that it is really very important, but the aerial photo showed Humbert Place that would be south of the structures in, in question, when in reality is north of the structure. That, so that is mislabeled. That is not Humbert Place on that aerial photo. I think that's, that's, I guess, a basic comment. We just basically think it's, it's, it's overkill. It's too much for this neighborhood. It's not quaint. We moved to Princeton for quaint. And it's not going to add quaint. Yeah, and for the, you know, it's not a low, we're not a low tax town to pay the kind of taxes, you know, like I said, it's, it's kind of a, a hulking building just put in. I think it would disrupt this neighborhood. I believe that, I haven't, I don't know any of the history, but the little bit of rumors I heard is nobody wanted to touch that building because of some of the, I guess, problems with their zoning. I don't understand it all. But I don't think, you know, when we first moved here, when we heard different rumors, it was never three units. It was always two. I guess, you know, that's just pretty much what I got to say.
Okay, we have one last member of the public with their hands raised. It's Mr. Sam Bunting. I'm now promoting him.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So, sworn or firm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Samuel Bunting, B U N T I N G.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking my comment tonight. You know, I'm listening to the comments from the neighbors and, you know, I felt like I had to say something, although I'm not an immediate neighbor to this property. I live in Dempsey Avenue, which is about a mile away from here. I have to say that I personally would be absolutely delighted to have this development in my backyard. What I have in my backyard is one very large McMansion style home, which replaced a property from the 1950s that had been there before. Now, it strikes me that what young people want, young households and people who are moving to Princeton, would love to have the opportunity to move into this kind of more compact, small footprint home, where they would have easy access to the town. And the property might be slightly less expensive than the single family homes, which are characteristic of a huge portion of Princeton and a huge portion of the surrounding area. People who want that open space, they have their pick of open space in any number of townships around here. The thing which makes Princeton special is that it has these more small footprint homes where people can live and have close walking access to jobs and amenities. And so, I think that although there is clearly some increase in density, it is the most incremental increase in density that is possible. You're going from two units to three units. That is just the most incremental change which is possible. And if we cannot countenance going from two to three, then what are we saying? Are we saying that we're done in Princeton and no one else can come? I think that this is a terrific location for this project. I think that the project looks absolutely great. It has a whole bunch of ecological features, which we regularly say is what we want. It complies with all the myriad regulations in terms of stormwater, which we have added on to new developments. And I think that this is exactly the type of project that we ought to be encouraging and applauding in Princeton. So, you know, I understand that there is, you know, some concern about it in the neighborhood, but I think that this is a terrific project that would benefit the town, be strongly in demand. And I hope that you can approve this and also find other opportunities for putting more developments like this around Princeton, including in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie, was there anyone else?
That is the last person. Oh, Bruce Lawton, just put his hand up.
Hello?
Hello?
Mr. Lawton, can you put your video on?
Uh, my video, I should be on. Hold on. Start the video. There we are.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So, sworn or firm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Bruce Lawton, L A W T O N.
Thank you.
I live at 51 Hawthorne, so I'm not obviously a direct neighbor, but I know Humbert quite well. I've parked over there from time to time if I need a halfway point to walking into town for some reason or other. I've been listening to all of, I've been here for the whole meeting. And I would throw my supporter hat in with most of the neighbors that live over there that have been speaking, concerns about, you know, basically, okay, got torn down, you're rebuilding. Should be something more akin to the character of the neighborhood that's over there. A two dwelling unit or for two families or two entities makes more sense than three. And there should be some consideration in respect to the character and the nature of what people expect to live around there. And that's basically it. I just, and it just seems that every time something new goes up, it's always about maximizing the real estate for whoever is owning it and is going to be making money renting it. Obviously, you're going to make more money renting three units than two. But it would be nice if real estate developers around here started thinking, and obviously probably not, but to think a little bit more about the character of where they're looking to make their money and putting up these, these new, tearing down what was there and putting up these new things. And that said, I just wanted to offer my few comments and thoughts and basic support of the neighbors that are over there who also have concerns about, you know, it really shouldn't be three, it should be two. Otherwise, a lot of the thinking behind the green space and a lot of these things seem to be very nice. But anyway, that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I think Mr. Ross raised his hand again. So, what do you want me to do?
Okay, well, let's hear him briefly. And then I think Mr. Pigeon and his group need to talk. They've been very patient. So.
You're muted, Mr. Ross.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My question was, and again, I'm not familiar with how these work, if any of the members of the commission, the committee have walked this neighborhood and actually looked at this property, because the, all the schematics, I'm not sure what they're properly called, there's a lot of gobbledygook on there that is really kind of hard to see without seeing what this neighborhood and what that Humbert Lane is all about. And I'm just curious if the committee does walk the neighborhood or not to see it.
Well, I think most of the board members are conscientious and at least walk part of it. So, I don't know. Varies from time to time, right? Any of you want to volunteer and say that you went around and looked at it or?
I have been on Humbert Lane many times, Humbert Street.
Yeah, I think, I think many of us are familiar with it in our day to day lives, not just with respect to this application.
That's right.
It is.
And we have, I have walked it, so.
It's a very well-known street.
Hmm. It's reassuring to know that you've all been there and seen what's there and what might probably happen there. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak from the public group? Because I do think that we need to move on to.
I think we should move on to Mr. Pigeon. No one else has their hands raised.
Okay, well, seeing none, let's close that public portion of the meeting and let's open it for, I guess, it's Mr. Pigeon and his group to present their testimony on it. Shall we go ahead with that? Anyone? No comments. All right.
Yes, let's go.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is John Pigeon. I'm from the law firm of Pigeon and Pigeon. Our offices are on Alexander Road. I represent three interested parties who are the owners of the properties located on Humbert Place, Humbert Lane. I guess it's called various things. I would like to call two of those interested parties to briefly give some factual background. And then we'd also like to offer the expert testimony of Stephen Lyden from Burgess Associates, who's a professional planner. So, that's acceptable. First, I'd like to call Don Greenberg.
Why don't we swear in your three witnesses right now? Okay. Are they all on the screen?
No.
I moved Mr. Greenberg over. Who are the other individuals?
Mr. Dan Brown, who was here earlier, I know, and also Mr. Stephen Lyden, who's the planner.
There's a Steve in the attendees.
Steve, yeah. Is that it?
Well, there's no other Steve. I hope it is.
Would you like me to let Steve over?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, where's?
Don, Don has to turn on his video.
Yes.
Here we go.
Okay, good. And Mr. Brown, could you unmute yourself? No, thank you. If the three, you can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yeah.
I do.
So, sworn or firm, if you could just go around and just give your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Don Greenberg and it's G R E E N B E R G. And my wife, Mary Ann, and I own 10-12 Humbert. And just to clarify, 12 is the backyard and 10 is the house.
My name is Daniel Brown, B R O W N. My wife Sarah is in the picture with me. I own 6-8 Humbert Lane with my front yard being taxable code 29 Humbert Street.
And my name is Steve Lyden and that's spelled L Y B O N.
First, Mr. Greenberg, if it's acceptable to proceed, you've already stated that you and your wife Mary Ann own 10-12 Humbert Lane. How long have you owned that property?
Approximately four years.
Can you describe that property for the board briefly, please?
Sure. The property is a small, single family home. It's about 900 to 1,000 square feet, built in the early 1900s. It's two bedrooms, one bath with a small yard, built on a fieldstone foundation.
And where's your property located in relation to the subject property?
It's about 28 feet, based on their diagrams. I was able to get that number, about 28 feet from the northeast corner of the proposed apartment building.
So, you're the back property on?
Yes, we're the very back property on Humbert Lane.
Across Humbert Lane from the subject property?
Correct.
And the property is currently occupied by a tenant?
Yes, he testified earlier, David Zinkin.
Yes. And what are your long-term plans for the property?
So, our long-term plans for the property, so we continue to, we continue to have a long-term tenant. David's there as long as he wants to be. When he decides to move out, we plan to renovate the house and that's where we plan to move. You know, when we purchased it, it checked off a lot. It ticked a lot of points off on our boxes. It's walking distance to downtown. It had no traffic, off-street parking. It was the dead end, lots of green space and a nice manageable sized yard, you know, to grow some veggies, plant some perennials. And it wasn't in overly built up area. You know, there was a modest duplex at the front and Dan's house next to ours. And it was just, you know, it was a nice little spot to be.
And how do you gain access to your property?
So, there's single access through Humbert Lane or maybe Tilly Lane, we should call it. And it's a narrow driveway. We have a permanent access easement with parking rights. Getting out of the driveway though, getting in is easy. Getting out of the driveway can be pretty tricky if there's cars parked along the north side, along our houses. And just a note about that, when those cars are parked there, they're like two feet from our houses or three feet from our houses. They're right up on our houses. And so, unless you could turn around at the bottom of the driveway, you have to back out, at least from my house, about 125 feet. On a very narrow driveway.
You have any concerns about the impact of the proposed development on your access to your property?
Absolutely. The driveway is narrow to begin with. And if they're talking about letting tenants from the, from those, from the rentals in the apartment building park there, first of all, you know, a car is what, about seven, eight feet wide? And if they don't park right up against the sidewalk or on the sidewalk, it narrows the driveway a lot and it makes getting in and out hard. Plowing is almost impossible unless everybody moves their cars out. And I just think that it would make things untenable.
You think having an additional unit in addition to the two families that was there before will impact access and parking for your property?
Absolutely. I mean, they're allowing three parking spaces. There's three, three-bedroom units. All right. And from what I understand, the average for a three-bedroom unit is two cars per unit is what most of those people would own. So, you're talking six cars now, plus the cars of myself and, you know, my tenant and Dan. He has two units. You would have cars up and down the north side. And as my tenant said, you know, who's going to enforce people parking on the south side? You know, by the time somebody comes to ask them to move, how long do you have to wait? It seems just like an untenable, untenable situation to have that many units and have that many cars in such a small restricted area. I mean, that driveway is only about, is only about 18 feet wide. That's without a car parked.
So, with a car parked, it's about 11 feet wide?
Yeah, roughly about 11 feet wide. And prior, with the old duplex that was there, there was a little sidewalk, which you could actually, you know, if you needed to, you could drive down that, you know, that was right next to the, to the old duplex. You know, now they're talking about putting in six-inch Belgian blocks, so you can't do that. So, it's going to be a very restrictive area to get your car in easy, out not so much. Yeah. What about getting a fire truck or an ambulance down there? It's, I think it's a disaster waiting to happen.
Are you concerned about any other impacts that the proposed three-unit apartment building would have on your property?
Well, sure, you know, the proposed apartment is huge. Okay, it's almost 100 feet long. It, you know, it's about three times the depth of what was there. They're trying, it's way too big for the space they're trying to squeeze it into, you know. And that's what they're doing. They're trying to wedge as much money-making property in there as they can with no concern for the character of the neighborhood or the effects it will have on the neighbors. And when they say that they're going to preserve my parking space, that's a bit disingenuous. My parking space is granted by deed in that easement. They're not preserving anything. I am guaranteed that space. And I have to check, but I may actually have two spaces. You know, if that building is built, I mean, we moved there because it was a quiet dead end. If that move, if that building is built, I wouldn't want to live there. And in my opinion, it would make it harder to sell my place if I went down that route, because who wants to look out their window at a big box? I mean, this is going to be a huge building. And, I mean, I get that it's a difficult property to develop. And I commend the architect and the designers for all their, you know, the silver lead and all the environmental things they're doing. But if they really But if they really wanted to be sustainable, they would reduce the size. Because, I mean, that's one of the keys of sustainability, not taking up too much space. And if you talk about open space, right now, if you look at that overhead shot, um, that, that they provided, there's roughly, a- and I didn't, you know, measure this out with a tape measure, but just looking at their diagrams, right now, there's roughly, I would say conservatively, four thousand square feet of open space. They want to reduce that to twelve. I mean, that seems to me ridiculous. You know, I, I think that they could put in something that would be, if not conforming, requiring very few variances if they went with a single-family home or a duplex. You know, it, to, to me, it just seems like, uh, and, you know, I'm sorry if I insult anybody, but it, it just seems like it's, it's a money grab trying to put in a triplex there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all I have from Mr. Greenberg. Next, I would like to call Mr. Dan Brown. Let me ask him some similar questions.
Go ahead.
Mr. Brown, you've already been sworn. Uh, you're the owner of, uh, six to eight Humbert Lane. Can you describe your property to the board, please?
It's a two-family home. Uh, three stories on the left side, two stories, uh, you know, three livable floors on the left side, two livable floors on the right. Uh, shingled. You know, like Don says, it's a fieldstone basement, you know, foundation walls. And it's, uh, built, uh, in about nineteen-ten, nineteen-thirteen, and part of the appeal of living or buying that home initially nineteen, uh, twenty-twelve was that it was a representative of the Princeton I grew up in, of a neighborhood where people know each other and stop and say hello. It was very, uh, we had a bucolic view looking out the windows to the backyard of, uh, twenty-three, twenty-five Humbert Street. And that was a big appeal of, uh, living in a nice, quiet neighborhood in downtown. And it was convenient to shopping, it was convenient to the fire department on Chestnut Street. I volunteered in for about twelve or thirteen years. I could drive efficiently to emergencies in town. And we would like to see the, uh, integrity of the, the neighborhood kept intact and the history, uh, the original owners of twenty-three, twenty-five, uh, uh, Giulia Merkelini, who was the matriarch of the Brooks family, was born in my house, number six Humbert Lane. Uh, just as a little bit of neighborhood history, so we would like to see something that's in the ca- that keeps the character of the neighborhood. And, you know, something that more in the immediate futures. I moved a year ago. But my parents are elderly and my father's sticking, you know, if I need to move back to Princeton, I would like to have some of the same enjoyment that I, I had for, or eight years living there. And in a more long-term goal, when I come back to retire, I would like to have a nice neighborhood to live in, where people aren't crammed you know, aren't crammed into small spaces and they talk to each other. In essence, you know, I'd like to live in something, in a neighborhood that's not a transient community.
You're redundant. So you heard Mr. Greenberg's testimony with respect to access and parking. Uh, would you like to add anything to his testimony with respect to those two issues and its impact on your property?
Uh, yes. So when I bought the house in twenty-twelve, it was explained that there were three parking spaces associated with my property. The first one in front of the stockade fence in my yard. And the other two, in essence, right in front of my house, six dash eight. And what I heard, I think the, the gentleman who's the planner for the builders, say that, you know, they would move two spaces for me. So I've automatically lost a space, which decreases value to my property. That's nice, you know, har- uh, parking downtown off-street is hard to come by in Princeton. It's a nice luxury to have. To have one immediately taken away from me from what I believe would be a prescriptive easement. I've been parking there for, or had access to those spaces for roughly nine years now. Uh, seems, uh, doesn't seem quite appropriate. And having driven emergency vehicles, you know, it would become prohibitive to move, uh, an ambulance or a fire truck to the back properties, hindering again the value and the safety of the public. Uh, which doesn't seem particularly, you know, neighborly to me. And I know as our, you know, Don's tenanted by a former neighbor and, you know, a guy I'm friendly with, he's had the ambulance come to his house on a number of occasions, and it's tight as it is. And, you know, that, those extra couple minutes of jockeying cars could be the a matter of life or death or serious injury, which is inhumane. Uh, I'm, you know, living in a first-world country. And I feel that when, you know, then that's, those are, those situations happen infrequently, but they do occur. But then on a more practical level, moving vehicles in and out, you know, my little Subaru barely fit as, uh, as, you know, getting in and out with the increased traffic of a third unit. So I don't think, you know, it's, uh, a great addition to the neighborhood.
Do you think that the proposed three-apartment building would have any other adverse impacts on your property?
Yeah, should I, you know, should I decide to sell it at some point? The value will drop dramatically, having a triplex, you know, looming over my property. So, yeah, that would uh, not be so, it would not be a benefit for me. And just the enjoyment of life when I do move back. I don't want to look at a supersized structure and deal with traffic. You know, the impact of traffic alone is a, isn't, isn't pleasant. And there's also, I think, a safety issue where people driving or backing their vehicles on the Humbert Street. Uh, we have, you know, kids in the neighborhood, people with pets, you know, a lot of, a lot of just generalized question marks. Uh, that I think, yeah, would be not, not just to my property, but to the neighborhood as a whole, just we're, we're all, we're all losing the aesthetics and the sense of community, which would be a shame.
Okay, thank you. That, that's all I have of Mr. Brown. Uh, last, I would like to call Mr. Lyden, who's a professional planner, and he's already been sworn. Mr. Lyden, would you please give us a brief resume of your educational background and experience?
Certainly, and, uh, good evening, or maybe good night to, uh, board members, Madam Chairman and, and the attorney. I am a professional planner. I have, uh, held that New Jersey-issued license since sometime in the late nineteen-eighties. As I was walking over my office tonight, I was trying to think of when it was actually issued, and I couldn't, but I know it was in the late eighties. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and the licensing is more of a state thing. The AICP, Institute of American Planners, is, is a, a national certification program, and I hold both. I have, uh, in previous lives, I have been a planning director for a community in which, uh, March County, I was also for about ten or eleven years. I was also the zoning officer in that community. I have been, uh, employed by Burgess Associates. I think it's twenty years next week. I've, I've been here quite a while. I, uh, have my, uh, my undergraduate degree from Leipziger University, and I have testified in front of municipal court and Superior Court in about five counties, I believe. Uh, my license is in good standing, and I, um, spend about three or four nights a week testifying in front of boards, uh, like this, and I do, can't get, can't wait to get back to, uh, in-person meetings. Uh, the Zoom stuff doesn't work well for me.
So you've testified before planning boards and boards of adjustment throughout the state of New Jersey?
Uh, generally the north and central part, but yes.
Thank you. I, 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 I offer Mr. Lyden as an expert witness in the area of planning and land use.
We accept his credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you've been retained by Don Greenberg, Mary Ann Greenberg, and Dan Brown, who are interested parties who own neighboring properties, to testify in this matter. What documents did you review in preparation for this hearing?
I, I have reviewed the, uh, Princeton, uh, planning board, uh, master plan. Three examination reports, it's current reexamination reports. I have also, uh, reviewed the applicable sections of the municipal zoning ordinance, and after I had looked at those documents to get a a background sense, I had been down to the property, walked the property, went back to the cemetery, walked the site. And I think I am, uh, well-versed in the, the surrounding neighborhood, proposed development, and what had been on the property.
Thank you. Now, you visited the property. Could you please describe it without being redundant? I know there's been some description of it so far, but from your perspective as a professional planner?
Certainly, a- and I am conscious of, of the late hour of night, and I will try my best to be, um, concise without repeating a lot of, uh, earlier testimony. Uh, the property in question fronts along Herbert Street. There hasn't been a lot of testimony about Herbert Street. It's a narrow road. It is a one-way road. It's a deficient road, uh, as far as municipal standards go. Uh, it only has a thirty-five-foot right, thirty-five-foot wide right of length. A typical municipal road has a fifty-foot right of length. Um, the distance from curb to curb, it's not the typical standard thirty feet. It's less than that. And for those reasons, it's been made one-way.
This is Humbert Street you're referring to?
Humbert Street, yes. Humbert Street, the street that Humbert, uh, Place, uh, has access to. And I point that out because, uh, there's been a lot about parking, and it's not so easy just to park on Humbert Street. Yes, there is parking allowed, but it is a, it is a substandard municipal street. The site is, uh, the, the property is a site of demolished former building. Right now, there are no dwelling units on the property. I think there was some testimony that there was two on it. Um, that's all the information and no longer current. Humbert Place is not a dedicated municipal street. Uh, the property in question is eleven thousand and eight square feet. It has, uh, characteristics of sixty-one point two-two feet of lot frontage. Uh, nearly twenty percent of that, nearly, well, no, excuse me, nearly twenty feet or almost thirty percent of the sixty-one feet of frontage is encumbered by access and parking easements. So that's a substantial portion of the frontage.
But, but I may interrupt for a minute, but even with the easement for Humbert Place, the property's still forty-one point three feet wide, is that correct, according to the tax map?
Um, I believe according to the drawing submitted by the applicant, that the property is sixty-one feet, sixty-one point two-two feet along Humbert Street.
But, but if you deduct the easement, I'm just saying.
Oh, if you, yes, if, if one were to deduct easements, it would be forty feet of frontage, yes.
Which, which is consistent with all the other properties that never have the forty feet. Is that, is that true?
I have not done a, um, a full study, but I don't, I think there are wider properties than that on Humbert Street.
Okay, please, please continue.
Certainly. Um, I was previously mentioned access and parking easements encumber about thirty-one hundred square feet of the lot area. So that's twenty-eight point five percent of the property in question is encumbered and constrained by dedicated easements. So that, what that does is it reduces the development potential of the property in question significantly. Heard a lot of development. Uh, you've heard a lot of testimony about the surrounding development, so I'll skip that. You've heard about the proposed development. Um, I would just point out so that the record is clear. It's a three-dwelling apartment building. It's two stories above grade with attic space. It is on a, on a, um, has, it is designed with basement space, and the, this is a key issue in my estimation. The building is oriented contrary to the requirements of the Princeton Zone. And that's the conclusion that you will see in the March thirtieth review memo from the zoning officer and the planning board engineer on page two of seven in their, uh, in their memo, three-point-O land use and zoning code requirements. The second paragraph, the first sentence reads in part, "The R-four zoning for attached dwellings envisioned side-by-side attached units fronting the street with conventional side and rear yards." I think that sentence is extremely important as the board considers this application and, and deals with the variances that are being preserved, uh, being sought. I have looked at your master plan. It was adopted in nineteen ninety-six with subsequent, uh, amendments. There are, I, I know it's getting late. There are five goals I'd like to bring to the board's attention that are in that master plan. The first one is to preserve and protect the character of existing neighborhoods. The proposed development contrary to this goal. Instead of having the housing units oriented towards and adjacent to the street, they're perpendicular to the street. So the idea of preserving and protecting the character of the existing neighborhood is not met. The second goal that I want to bring to the board's attention, new development must be compatible with the neighborhood uses. The proposed development is contrary to this goal. Rural and, another goal from your pla- your master plan, rural and scenic character is retained by setting development back from roads, limiting clearing, and the extent of impervious coverage. The proposed development is contrary to this goal. Your ordinance limits impervious coverage to thirty-six percent of, of a lots area. The applicant is proposing a hair under seventy-one percent. The goal of rural and scenic, scenic character being retained is clearly not being met by this application. Another goal I want to bring to your attention, new housing development should create and sustain attractive and safe neighborhoods. Critical parameters are the relationship, relationships buildings have to each other, and parking among others. The proposed development is contrary to this goal. The land use plan states existing neighborhoods should be protected from changes in density. Right now, this site does not have density. It's vacant except for the driveway. The proposal for three dwelling units on this site means you're talking about density of twelve units per acre. The proposed development is contrary to the goal. At this point, I'd like to turn my attention to the Princeton zoning ordinance. The property in question is in the R-four zone. As I've already read to, in, into the record, the, the zoning for R-four envisions attached dwellings side-by-side, fronting the street with conventional side and rear yards. This proposed development is contrary to the intent of the ordinance. The proposed development does not provide conventional yards, nor does the proposed development pattern provide usable open space adjacent to the units as required by the R-four zone. This proposed orientation of the dwellings and lack of conventional side rear and open spaces is contrary to the zoning ordinance and creates zoning non-conformities. And I would draw the board's attention respectfully to section B seventeen A dash two-point-two-six-seven, attached dwellings in the R-three and R-four districts. I can only assume this is the current ordinance because it, I downloaded it from the Princeton website. And I'd like to spend a little bit of time, realizing how late it is, discussing what this, what this chart requires. The first thing I'd like to bring to your attention is that this is for, this table is for attached dwellings in the R-three and R-four district only. Talking about attached dwellings, and we're in the R-four zone, so this, this is a, a relevant table. And, uh, just before the bottom of the page, if anyone's reading along, uh, in the left-hand side, it talks about, or left-hand column, it does minimum required colon, then it says lot area. And the table continues on to the next page. And for the R-three zone, there's a standard, three acres. For the R-four zone, there is no standard. So there is no minimum block size as required for attached dwellings in the R-four zone. However, there is a required average lot area per dwelling. And that has an asterisk. And if you read down to the asterisk, it says, "Part of this area may be provided as common land directly accessible from the lot in each individual dwelling unit, provided that the lot of each individual dwelling unit shall not be less than the minimum lot width and lot depth." Now, I know there's a lot in that sentence, even to read it at ten twenty. So it's harder to, to understand it if you're not reading along. But there are some key takeaways in that sentence. And one of those is that each individual dwelling unit shall not be less than the minimum lot width and lot depth. So typically in zoning, lots have lot area requirements. They have frontage requirements and they have depth requirements. Princeton, in your ordinance, has taken that another step. And for attached dwellings in the R four zone, each individual dwelling has a zoning standard that must be met. And if you can't meet those standards, you need to seek a variance. Why? Because it would be a non-conformity from the zoning, from the table in the zoning ordinance. So required average lot area per dwelling in this particular zone is three thousand square feet. Now, because you're supposed to be convinced, so what I've done is I have taken the, the applicant's drawing, access and parking easement, it's sheet number three. And I've drawn a line from the northern property line to the southern property line at the so-called rear wall of the first unit. And then I did the same thing at the so-called rear wall of the second unit. So I've, I've created three distinct areas on this property. Why did I do that? I did that because it's supposed to be conventional zoning with conventional yards fronting on the street. And that's what this ordinance requires you to do if you have a conventional lot. The fact that you have a non-conventional development here doesn't relieve the applicant of meeting these zoning requirements. So I then calculated the lot areas that this left me with in order to create conventional front side and rear lot lines. Lot A, which according to your drawings, is the first dwelling closest to Humbert Street, has a lot area of two thousand eight hundred seventy-seven square feet. Variance relief is required for lot area for lot A. For lot B, the calculation works out to two thousand and twenty square feet for that particular lot. Three thousand feet is required, variance relief is necessary. Lot C, the back lot, is larger. It has six thousand four hundred and twenty-eight square feet, so that one is a conforming lot area. The next thing I looked at was usable open space per each dwelling. And if I go back to that table, it tells me usable open space per dwelling unit. And if you look at what that means in the ordinance, it has to be directly accessible from the lot in question. So for lot A, I had a lot area of two thousand eight hundred seventy-seven feet. For usable open space, it tells you to delete driveways. So I took, I took the, I took nine hundred and forty square feet off of the two thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven square feet. I also, because we're talking open space, I deleted the dwelling, the footprint of the dwelling. That number I took off the architectural plans. And that number is seven hundred eighty-nine square feet. That left me with one thousand one hundred forty-eight. It exceeds the minimum usable open space area, no variance is required. I did the same thing for lot B, that's the middle lot. It has an area of two thousand twenty square feet. It has driveway of six hundred and sixty square feet. And the dwelling, according to the architectural plans, has a footprint of eight hundred seventy-three square feet. When you subtract those numbers out from the lot area, this lot has four hundred eighty-seven square feet of usable open space per dwelling. That lot is under the six hundred feet required, variance relief is necessary. For lot C, it's getting late, I'll just tell you that it was three thousand six hundred forty-three square feet, doing the same protocol, so that lot does not need a variance.
As a professional planner, which of the bulk variances caused you the greatest concern?
The bulk variances.
Well, the variance, the seater.
They, they both do, because one's a function of the other. If there was more lot area for each of these dwellings, there'd be more usable open space for these dwellings. The fact that the middle lot is grossly underneath what's required. And I believe that, as questioned by other residents earlier, the space in the front, if it's used at all, will be captured, if you will, by the owners or the renters in that building. Just like the space in the rear next to the parking area will be captured by those people. And those renters may or may not like someone else using that space. And they may have things like soccer balls out there or little nets for children to play with. And I think they'll will defend that space as theirs regardless of what the owner thinks might happen. I could go on with variances. Your ordinance requires the end lot. And it talks about the lot, it talks about the dwelling having to have forty feet. So I measured lot A to the south side property line from the north wall through the dwelling and then to the south property line. I measured thirty-six feet. It needs a variance. I stopped at the, the, the north wall because if this was a conventional layout, as the Princeton ordinance requires, there would be a building there. So yards are measured open and unconstructed to the sky, so that would not be included in the, in the lot width requirement. So lot A with thirty-six feet of width requires variance relief. I did not measure the middle lot, lot B, because your ordinance doesn't have a standard for that. That makes sense, between two dwellings. I measured lot C, and because I measured from the south line for lot A, and this is supposed to be a conventional development, I measured to the north line for that particular unit. And, and I came up with, oh, yeah, I came up with twenty-three point five feet, so that needs a variance.
You, you've already commented on the open space and the impervious coverage. Would you also like to comment on Humbert Lane and its relationship to this proposed project?
You mean Humbert Place?
Wait, well, as far as I can tell, it's called both, so yes.
Well, let's be clear then, the lane to the north, that's along the north property line?
Yes.
Okay, that, that property is part of the P Q, there are easements on it. It's, it runs for about twenty feet to the, to the eastern, towards the eastern property line. There are two components which I think are, are very important when you discuss Humbert Place. One, it's, overall, it's twenty feet wide. And it has a nine-feet foot-wide parking area along the north side of it. That leaves an eleven-foot-wide travel lane for two-way traffic. That is a completely insufficient substandard number. In fact, you wouldn't usually have a one-way lane at eleven feet. The, the, the minimum you could have according for a public street under the RXIS standards, that is the residential site improvement standards, which have been adopted by New Jersey back in nineteen ninety-three and they became effective in nineteen ninety-seven. Something called a rural lane. And the minimum width, width for a rural lane is eighteen feet. So this eleven-foot two-way lane is completely substandard. And I believe it's unsafe because I don't know of one engineering standard or one planning standard that endorses and recommends use of an eleven-foot traveled lane. And, and it's important to recognize, there are at least three dwellings that are using this lane on the north side of, 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 of the property. The proposal is to double that, to have six properties in total used. When was the last time the Princeton Planning Board approved the subdivision that served six lots and had an eleven-foot-wide roadway? I would submit to you it's never happened, and I'll submit to you it will never happen. It's just too substandard. I don't want to spend too much time on Humbert Street or Place, but I do want to pull the board's attention to another important consideration. There is a five-foot-high stockade fence immediately adjacent to the right-of-way Humbert Place. It extends to the sidewalk along Humbert Street. There is both a fire hydrant and a utility pool in the Humbert Street sidewalk close to the curb line. Why is that important? It's important because any pedestrian, any bicyclist, any jogger who is using that sidewalk is going to be up against the, the residential portion of the sidewalk. Because of that location of that fence, there is no way for a pedestrian using the sidewalk to see an oncoming car. And there's no way for the car driver to see the person on the sidewalk. It is a incredibly, it's an accident waiting to happen if it hasn't happened already. And I think this board has an obligation, especially under the municipal land use law, to further the public health, safety, and welfare to avoid doubling the number of residential units that are using Humbert Place. A, a, another thing that wasn't really discussed about, the residential site improvement standards, which involve all residential development in New Jersey, require two parking spaces per dwelling unit when it's a three-bedroom, configure H. So the applicant is proposing three parking spaces. That's only half of what the residential site improvement standards demand. Why is that relevant? Well, I checked the census, the Census Bureau information for cars per household in Princeton, and one point six cars per household. Even if only that standard is used, there's a significant shortfall in parking for this proposed development. I don't know where you'd park the cars. It, it, it is a real problem. The, the applicant would have to try to get a minimum exception from RXIS, the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs that runs the RXIS program. And I seriously question whether or not such a approval would be forthcoming. So what I'm suggesting, I know it's getting late, and I'll wrap up, is that neither the positive nor the negative criteria can be met with this proposed development. It does great harm to your master plan. I provided testimony how five separate goals of the master plan are not being met. It, it is contrary to what the ordinance requires as far as providing conventional lots and conventional yards around those dwellings. It also is contrary, it doesn't meet the physical fitness, the physical features test, nor does it meet the C two benefits test. And it certainly doesn't meet the negative criteria because the master plan goals are impaired, as I noted earlier, and the zoning ordinance is impaired. So, and, and one last thing I want to leave you with before I, I start my testimony. One of the purposes of your zoning ordinance is to control the development of the borough's residential areas by limiting the density of new development in such areas. This proposal increases density and represents an overdevelopment of the property in question. So one of your specific purposes is violated by this, by this application. So I don't believe the applicant can meet the statutory criteria that is obligation in order to be granted the requested variances. And I think, I think if you, unless you have any more questions for me, Mr. Pigeon, I think that was the heart of my testimony.
Pigeon has the applicant met its burden of meeting the positive criteria for a C one variance by reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of the property, or by exceptional topographic conditions or physical features?
No, the, the site is pretty level. It's free of floodplains, it's free of wetlands. So that, that's the physical features. As far as the, the, the shape, it's a rectangular parcel. That's a typical residential shape for development of a lot. It is, it doesn't have exceptional narrowness, nor does it have exceptional shallowness. So I don't believe they can meet the C one physical features test at all now.
And could this lot accommodate a one-family or two-family residence and mitigate many of the variances and other concerns that you've raised?
Yes, it certainly, it certainly could be developed with a one-family dwelling. And the number of variances would be dramatically reduced, if not eliminated. A one-family development would require, I think, seventy-two hundred square feet in the zone, and the property's eleven thousand and eight square feet, so I believe a conforming single-family home could be constructed on this lot, yes.
And could a two-family be constructed and eliminating the need for many of the variances that this proposed three-unit apartment building requires?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
But with respect to the C two variance, does this proposal promote any of the purposes of the land use law other than the, the environmental, which is paragraph?
No, no, it doesn't, and it doesn't because, real quickly, C two variance has, it's a public, a public benefits test. And the purpose of the ask at the municipal land use law has to be advanced by the deviation. And the benefits of the variance don't accrue to the developer or the applicant. They need to accrue to the public. And the focus is not on the property in question, but on how the neighborhood will be enhanced with the grant of the proposed variances. And the result must be better planning and zoning alternatives. And this application does not meet those standards because of the, the many things that are deficient, especially Humbert Place as, yeah, Humbert Place as a, a drive with only an eleven-foot-wide drive aisle.
Does, does this proposal promote any of the purposes of the land use law other than paragraph N, which is to promote utilization of renewable energy resources?
No, it does not.
And couldn't that also be accomplished through a smaller project, a two-family or a one-family residence as opposed to a three-family apartment building?
Yes, they could be. There's nothing about that third unit that changes the analysis with that particular purpose of the municipal land use law.
And you've also, you've already testified in detail on the negative criteria that the applicant is not satisfied with the negative criteria. So I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Leibn.
You, you're welcome, sir.
Madam Chair, if I can break in for a second, I need to ask advice of counsel. I think I need to recuse myself. One of the objectors is actually an architectural client of mine. So would you confer that disqualifies me from continuing on this hearing?
I will. Take your, take your name out of a potential forum. We are approaching eleven o'clock. We still have some time. That's the, that's the witching hour for the Princeton Planning Board, but I think we've really heard a great deal of testimony on this, and the question is, what do you want to do? Do you want to? Do you want to vote now? Do you want?
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask some follow-up questions of the planner.
Okay, go ahead.
And the applicant's attorney might?
I will keep it short, but I do have a few questions as well.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned the character as it's talked about in our master plan and subsequent reexamination reports. But you mentioned something about this, you can, in talking about this particular part of town, you mentioned rural and scenic character. Do you consider this a rural part of Princeton?
No, what I was, I probably was testifying too quickly. What I was referring to, when I mentioned the rural scenic character, was, first of all, I think that's overall a description of Princeton, not this particular neighborhood. And the goal was to limit clearing and the extent of impervious coverage. That's what I was focusing on. And this applicant does not meet that limitation of thirty-six percent.
You mentioned the zoning, which is R4, that's a rather high-density residential zone. Would you say, in your professional opinion, that's an appropriate type of zoning for a location like this, close into the center of town and within walking distance of our central business district?
Unfortunately, I did not have the time to do that detailed and global analysis.
Just generally planning, yeah.
The plans weren't available to me for printing, for whatever reason, until Monday of this week. So I had to focus my attention on reviewing what was in front of me, and I did not do that kind of a global analysis.
You haven't visited the site or the neighborhood?
I have, but I didn't have the drawings.
Did you notice that it's in close walking distance to our central business district?
The business district is a couple of blocks to the south, yes.
Okay. Another question I had for you is, you mentioned something about that you doubt that there's any place in Princeton where there's a grouping of perhaps six units on a very small driveway or private road. Did you do an extensive study of Princeton? Do you know this to be a fact, or you just, is that a guess, or?
Again, I only got the drawings this week, so I did not have the time to do an exhaustive study of Princeton. But I can't believe that the board has approved six dwellings off of an eleven-foot-wide travel lane.
All right, I'm getting back to this issue of character and how the master plan talks about it. Currently, on Humbert Place or Humbert Lane, there are three dwelling units, is that correct, on the northerly side of it?
That's correct, sir.
Would you say they're out of character with the neighborhood or in character with the neighborhood?
Well, first I'd point out, they were apparently constructed in the nineteen tens and nineteen twenties, which is before Princeton had a zoning order.
Right, I didn't ask about zoning, I asked about character. Would you say they're, are they in character with the neighborhood?
No.
The homes of your clients are not in character with the neighborhood?
That's correct. Most of the homes along Humbert Street are fronting toward the street as the zoning ordinance wants. These don't, they were constructed before the zoning words. I understand at one
I'm not asking if they're in conformance with the zoning. I'm asking if they're, as a planning, as a general planning concept, are they in character with the neighborhood?
No, they're not.
They're not in character with the neighborhood, the three?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, you surprised me with that answer. I guess that's Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair, just a few questions from me. The properties of your client, how many total units are there between the two of them?
I believe there are three.
And how many units are being proposed for this project?
Three.
And the units of your clients, they face in front to Humbert Place, is that correct?
For about the last hundred years or so, yes.
Okay. You mentioned density. Is a density variance required for this project?
No, but two of the three lots require a lot area relief.
But no density variance required, no floor area or a unit density variance, is that correct?
No, the absence before the correct word.
You mentioned parking. Is a parking variance required for the three spaces that this project is providing off-street?
The minimum exception from the residential site improvement standards is required.
But the Princeton ordinance does not require, a variance from Princeton's requirement of one space per unit is not required, is that correct?
That's correct, but I would challenge whether or not Princeton has a valid parking standard for residential uses.
Okay, but assuming that Princeton's ordinance is valid and has not been challenged or overturned, or would not be, this would conform with its ordinance, is that correct?
Under all those assumptions, yes.
Okay, have you known it to be challenged or overturned?
No, I have not.
Okay.
I also, to fully answer that question, I also know that Princeton has not been granted any special area waivers. I think that's what they call it in the DCA regulations for parking, like Hoboken has, for instance.
Finally, you're a planner, you're not an engineer, is that correct?
That is correct.
And yeah, there's some testimony about the width of the driveway. Is that the current condition that you were testifying about?
The eleven feet is the proposed condition.
And how does that compare to the current condition?
It's similar.
So the access to your client's property would be changed in any way with this similar condition? With the width change, would it be harder for them to back out?
Yes, it would be, because there's also going to be more cars using it. And the number of dwelling units that are going to be using it are double. So there are going to be practical, everyday uses of it. It's also going to make it more difficult for emergency services and the daily Amazon delivery driver to navigate the site. So yes, there is going to be a degradation in the quality of that use. So there'll be much more traffic on it.
When you say double, I guess you mean the change from five to six is doubling, or the change from three to six? How do you get doubling?
Well, there is no property on the, there are no dwellings on the PQ today, for having this hearing. And there are three dwelling units on the north side that currently use it. So although I'm not an engineer, my math is bad, three of the three gets me to six.
Got it, so your premise is based on the fact that the developer has already started demolishing the project, and that the two-unit duplex there in your mind was not ever a factor, I guess, is that correct?
That's right.
Thank you.
For today's situation.
Okay, all right, so, and I, no further questions for the witness.
All right.
I have one follow-up question, but even if you take into account there was a two-family there before, you're still going to increase the traffic on the street as a result of adding the extra residential unit and having a three-family instead of a two-family, is that correct?
That is true, and you also require, increase the parking requirements for the, to be placed on that drive, yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, let me just ask, do you want to continue this, or shall we vote on it? Anyone? I mean, you've heard a fair amount of arguments over the last
I would say we gauge how much discussion will, sorry, Jeff, I didn't mean to cut you off there. I say we gauge what the board feels like.
Right, well, I'm asking, do you want to go on, or do you want to vote?
I think everyone's done testifying.
I think so, too.
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt, I did have my hand up, I just wanted to add one last thing, if I might.
Is public comment still open, Chair?
Well, I'm the objector, so I always thought I might be able to just say one more thing that I did leave out of my testimony.
You're represented by counsel, correct?
I am.
I would ask that Mr. Greenberg, given the opportunity, formal rules of evidence don't apply, and I'm sure it's a brief comment.
All right, but it better be
Basically, two sentences.
Okay.
Okay, so here's just my last comment. I feel, in my opinion, it's not incumbent upon the town to grant what I think are these egregious variances that are being asked for in order so the applicant can maximize their profits, when they can build something that is conforming with very little variances. There's no hardship here. You know, maximizing your profit is not a hardship. There's no positive benefits that are being brought here, and rather negative benefits to my property, my neighbor Dan's property, and the neighborhood in general. So I just respectfully ask that the board turn down this oversized and unnecessary project. And I would just also comment that there was a two-family proposed back when this property was first purchased. And they can do a two-family, the plans exist. And I didn't actually like, I thought the two-family was a little big. But, so that's my comment.
Okay, because it was supposed to be a short comment at this point.
Yeah, that's it, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
I think we'll call the roll now, at this point. Carrie?
Yes, I'm here.
Carrie, I think I'd like to call the roll on this application.
Is the point of the roll call to see whether people want to vote, or otherwise, we need a motion, right?
We need a motion.
Yeah.
Were we going to have board discussion, or do we, we don't, do we need to have?
We've had a lot of discussion on this, I think.
Okay.
You want to go on, it's almost eleven o'clock, then we'll carry it to a meeting some other time.
Well, I feel like we haven't really had any discussion amongst the board. I mean, we've heard a lot of testimony.
Then we'll have to carry it, because it really is eleven o'clock.
Should we, well, I'm ready to vote. I don't know, maybe, why don't we take a, should we take a roll and see if board members are ready to vote?
Okay, you want to take a straw vote on that?
I'm ready to vote.
I wouldn't do this by majority rules. I think board members are entitled to board discussion on this, and there hasn't been any.
Yeah, may I make a suggestion? It's five minutes before eleven, why don't we take five minutes for board discussion, and then see if anyone wants to make a motion?
Well, here's my concern about that. If we make a motion, and if this is approved, then we're going to end up going through whatever conditions the board may discuss, and that is going to take us an extra half hour. So I feel like if the, if board members want to discuss, which I totally respect, then we should make the decision now to carry it to a subsequent meeting.
I agree.
That's fine with me.
I agree.
I'm fine with that, too.
I agree.
I agree.
So are we fine carrying it, or with not, with voting? What do we find?
Carrying.
Carrying. Just to be clear, though, that we resume the meeting with board discussion, and hear the conditions, and then vote. It's, will there be additional public comment, I think?
I think
We're past that, it's exactly what you said.
Great, I just want, for the twenty-one people who are in the attendee queue, I think we need to be clear about what's going to happen at the next meeting, that we're going to have a discussion. Board members will discuss, and then we'll consider, we'll hear Jerry's rundown of the of the conditions and items in the report, and then we'll vote.
Okay, does everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Yes.
I think we need a motion of some sort on that, at this point.
I'll move to carry it till the next available, to the next available date in the schedule.
I second the motion.
And Carrie, can you, can you give us a date so that the applicant's not going to have to re-notice?
Yes, actually, we have some opening on May sixth.
And when does the municipal land use law clock run?
The end of this month, I think we'll need an extension.
Okay, and Ryan, you have no problem with that?
I don't, I will find someone to cover this meeting, I'm in three other towns at that night, but we will, we will make the first available time you have available, so it's May sixth.
And I just want to make the comment that if we, as a board, are going to continue to stick to the eleven, we really are going to need to start, agree to start earlier, because it's really too, we're the only board I know in, the only municipal body that I know that does have this arbitrary cutoff. And I'm fine with it, but it really messes up our schedule, it's very discombobulating. And if people are really need to end at eleven, then we're going to need to start, start the hearings earlier.
That's fine.
Can I just say on that, that I've, in my, in my development work, I've never presented a planning board that did not end by ten PM? So I think if anything, we actually go later than many, and so I think
That's been my
Be clear about what our policy is.
Can we
To the councilwoman, to the councilwoman's point, though, I think, and I would support an earlier start time, even if it were just seven instead of seven-thirty. Obviously, there are noticing implications for that that can't be done this year, but
I think this requires a change, we'll probably have to get counsel to agree that we are changing our hours and
That's up to the board, the board, as you know, is an independent body and makes its own decisions.
With that. Anyway, so we had, we had a motion?
Yes, Mr. Quinn moved, and Ms. Sacks seconded a motion to continue this to the May sixth meeting.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? All right, carried.
And just to advise the public that, again, there'll be no further notice. The only notice is really what you just heard in terms of the carrying of the meeting to the sixth.
I just wanted to quickly ask, is it possible to limit the amount of time people speak? Because I feel like objectors, they oftentimes, like, you know, I mean, also the applicants, you know, they, their testimony is pretty extensive. And I'm wondering if we can condense that somehow.
We generally limit it to Well, it's funny, people have their own idea of what the time limit on the meetings are, so you get people who shut right up, and other people go on and on. But I agree that we should perhaps make it much more definitive, so that people do know that they only get a limited amount of time.
And the other issue is also multiple times for the same person. And I was wondering if Jerry could clarify whether, if citizens are represented by counsel, do they also get to speak and comment? I'm a little confused about our policy.
Well, it's not even a question of policy, it's a matter of law. If citizens are represented by counsel, they have to speak through counsel, so they can't just get up and testify. But just to finish, just to finish, but if counsel calls them as witnesses, then they can testify. So, I mean, it's really kind of a meaningless rule in a lot of ways, because all counsel has to do is call them as witnesses.
And the three-minute rule does not, does not apply to objectors' counsel.
Right, yeah, I would not apply it. But, I mean, again, there's case law that says you can have time limits, and three minutes has been specifically articulated as an appropriate
For public comment, though.
Right, right.
Okay, so we are set on a carry date, and I thank you all for sticking to at least eleven o'clock this time around.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good job. In Mr. Cohen's absence, let me be the one to say, motion to adjourn.
Bye.
Good night, thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Where is it?
Night, Wanda.
Good night.